Uh-oh, I walked in three meters from the ground.
Well, it's, you know, it's a step forward and you just haven't been able to get back.
Yeah.
I would, I would be interested to see how it's going.
Yeah.
Is livestream up? Jen said she can't see it. You know, I am hiding them. Look, that's happening. I was like, hey, we're going over after.
No, no, you're good.
And then he came and he's like, is this a private party? I'm like, this is Hilton, so you're here.
Yeah, he wasn't the only one standing there. Absolutely not, because I can get some of these things.
It's Johnny DJ.
I was like, doing all the background for making me think it's you.
Definitely different light. Different feel, I'd say.
I had fun.
It's one of the best parties I've been to in years.
First thing I just want to say is, thank you for coming out. I know, right now, especially this time of year, people have a lot of things going on, so the fact that you took some time out from your busy lives right now to come out and hear a little bit about, about this development means a lot. So, just in case if we have not met before, my name is Bobby Warren. I'm, I have the privilege to serve as the mayor of the City of Jersey Village. We, this meeting is designed to be a lot less formal than what you may have seen if you've come to council meetings in the past. It's specifically meant to be much more interactive, much more give and take, and hopefully we'll be able to achieve that. I know, I have personally done a number of town halls myself in the past. We're gonna try to keep a very similar format, but, you know, the key thing is, we want to make sure that as many people who want to participate and as many people who want to ask questions have an opportunity to do so. So, first things first, I will just say that we're gonna start off with, once we get through this initial introduction, we're gonna start off with a quick presentation to give our little bit of background on kind of how we got here, then we will open up the floor for questions. We are broadcasting online, so that people who are not able to be here can, can watch and see what's happening. So, we are going to ask that, as you have questions, if you will come up to the microphone, that will make it much easier for everyone else at home that may be watching, or anyone who watches after the fact, to be able to hear everything that's going on. The other thing we are going to ask is, if you can keep your questions as brief as possible, that will give us the best opportunity to allow everyone to participate. We are gonna ask that, at a maximum, you keep your, your questions to about 90 seconds. If you have a question or something that, that requires more in-depth background than that, this may not be the best venue for that, so, you know, at that point, I would encourage you instead to, to send us an email with that information, but hopefully, I think most people will be able to, to get their question out within that amount of time. In addition, we are going to ask that if you have multiple questions, that's fine, we're just going to make sure that we give everyone an opportunity, who has not yet asked a question, to do so before we allow people to ask any additional questions. So, you know, apart from that, the only other rule I would just ask is, just be considerate of everyone here, everyone's giving up their time in order to come out and participate, and so just be respectful of that, and, and let's try to make the best use of, of that time that's been given. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and ask Austin Belize to give us a quick presentation on this project.
Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor said, I'm Austin Belize, I'm the city manager here in Jersey Village, and just gonna give a little bit of a background presentation on the development and what we're here tonight to discuss. So, how did we get here today? It's important to look back at the history of this area as a whole. So, a little bit of the history of the project. Back in 2008, the city contracted with Kinley Horn and Associates for the mixed-use/ transit-oriented development plan. In 2011, based upon that plan, the city adopted the form-based codes for the Jersey Crossing area. The 2016 comprehensive plan lists its expanded restaurant services and entertainment options as one of the top priorities for the economic development, for the future growth of the city, based upon a lot of the surveys that were done by the residents at the time. In 2000, in 2018, the city purchased the 33 acres of land along Jones Road in order to settle lawsuits. The city paid $8.2 million for that. In 2019, the city entered into agreements with collaborative special projects for the development, and then in 2021, the city canceled those agreements due to a lack of progress. In 2022, the city signed a non-binding letter of intent with KHJR real estate investors. The city's had conversations with an independent league baseball team interested in locating here in Jersey Village, and in March, the city commissioned a study for a baseball stadium feasibility study. In July, that study came back, and that study recommended a stadium with 4,500 seats, finding that a stadium of that size would be very viable here in Jersey Village and the Houston area. In July, the American Association of Professional Baseball League and MLB Partner League submitted a letter of interest to the city of Jersey Village to have a team in Jersey Village. And in November, a couple of weeks ago, the city uploaded that letter of intent with KHJR. So, where are we potentially going from here? Right now, the development logistics kinda lay out like this. KHJR would master plan the current land owned by the city and the rest of the Ters 2 area, approximately 270 acres worth of land, all in the ETJ of the city right now. KHJR would develop high-end multifamily, retail, a hotel, and an entertainment facility in addition to a stadium and city hall. The entertainment facility is an 80,000-square-foot family fun center that will house bowling, alleys, bowling alleys, sports wing suites, virtual reality studios, rock climbing walls, mini golf courses, go-kart tracks, arcades, and hospitality facilities. A little bit more on the baseball side. The American Association, currently they have 12 teams in the Midwest, with one currently in Texas. They are looking to actively add four to six new teams in Texas and/or Louisiana. They call for six more teams by 2025. Jersey Village ranks well within the comparable cities for this league. As you can see, when it comes to population, we would be the largest population area for a 30-minute drive time from them. We'd have the second-best age, the eighth-best household income, and the second-best corporate base out of all of their team locations that they have across the Midwest right now. Stadium logistics. The Jersey Village Local Government Corporation would be proposed to own and lease the stadium. In other cities, local government corporations own stadiums as well, such as Minute Maid Park, Energy Stadium, Constellation Field, and Sugar Land, where the Sugar Land Skeeters play, and other cities across the state of Texas. The question often comes up, why would you use an LGC? Well, an LGC is like an LLC in the private sector. It's a separate legal entity, and any debt or any obligations made by the LGC would not come back on the city. The city would not be held responsible for any, any debt or anything like that, that the LGC had, so they would shield the taxpayers of the city by using the LGC. Team logistics. The league has identified team ownership groups that they're working through, they're working with. The team would lease the stadium 365 days a year, and they would operate events such as holiday lights, concerts, other sporting events like soccer, or the Savannah Bananas is a popular group right now that plays a lot of events. We don't have any concrete details about the team that we can show tonight. We do know that the league's been in great conversations with a couple of potentially great ownership groups, but any details about the lease and any payments to the LGC would be negotiated between the LGC and the team. When you look at revenue potentials for the city, when the development, the 33 acres only, the 33 acres of the development was fully built out, built out, fully built out the first year, those annual revenues are estimated to be about $1.3 million in property tax, $160,000 in sales tax, and $148,000 in hotel occupancy tax. Sales tax and hotel occupancy tax right here are listed after incentives to the developer, but you gotta remember that we have fire control and crime control logistics that each take a half, each get a half percent of sales tax. Those are not being rebated, and we estimate those to be $160,000 to each entity, $160,000 to crime control, $160,000 to fire control. That's roughly 1.75 people, if we have to add staff. Total revenue from these three sources alone, over 30 years, is estimated at $57 million. And these numbers are based solely on the 33 acres of land, and they're not inclusive of any other annexations that may occur, or any redevelopment of land that may occur. And as an anecdote, we've had one developer reach out to us, they're looking at doing a low-end industrial use, and they said, hey, we know you guys are looking at a baseball stadium, is that moving forward? And if it is, we wanna do something a lot different, a lot better for the city than just, just the low-end industrial use. So, there's already interest out there, there's already interest from people to do something better than what, what they would otherwise do without this development. So, the developer, developer incentive incentives, the city would sell the land to the developer for $8.3 million, less, minus any land that would be reserved for the city hall and stadium to be built on. The city would provide sales tax and hotel occupancy tax incentives of no more than $7 million to the developer over the life of the, of the agreement, the 20 years. So, why is this a good thing for Jersey Village? It's a great question to ask. One reason is it achieves one of the comprehensive plan goals set by the citizens, to provide more family-friendly entertainment and shopping options for our residents. The stadium would draw people from outside of Jersey Village, bringing them in to buy at restaurants, to, to stop at breweries or gas stations, we'll bring them in to spend their money here. It's certainly, I would likely spur the redevelopment, the ETJ, to further increase our taxes, especially based upon the conversations we've had with a couple of other people. The fire control and crime control logistics, which provides money for our police and fire departments, would get the full benefit of the sales tax collective for them. That half cent that's dedicated to each of them would stay with both of those funds and could be used for police and fire needs throughout the city. Couple of frequently asked questions that we've heard, what's the, why use an LGC? An LGC is like an LLC for the private sector. It shields the city from any obligations that the LGC might take on. Well, this, the, this project and other projects around the city are delayed, like the clubhouse conventions that are sidewalks, street projects, anything like that. And this project should not impact the funding of any other projects in the city, because it would all be funded through the revenues generated over there. How long do teams typically stay in stadiums? And that's a great question. For the American Association, any team that's been in longer than the last five years, the average team has been in existence for at least 25 years. Several teams have been in existence for a lot longer than that, but the average right now is 25 years for the other teams. Will the police and fire department move across 290? No. Mayor, that ends my presentation, and we'll turn it back over to you.
I'm glad he made that its own slide. It deserves its own slide, because it seems like it's the one question we keep getting asked over and over and over again. The consistent answer, again, no, there's no reason to, it makes no sense, we don't need to, it, it would benefit no one. Trust me, my home is in that direction, the exact opposite of the development. I don't want it going anywhere, and I don't think any of you do either. So, with that, we can open it up for questions. Again, you come up to the microphone. Other than that, there's no real formalities, other than what, what we discussed before. But, you know, we're, we're all here, I'm, I'm gonna kinda emcee things as we go along. Obviously, council members are present to, to be able to provide their input as well, so if you have questions for them, of course, you're welcome to, to ask them as well, but other than that, the floor shales. This man, if you'd like to come up, well, and if you would, just give us your name. You don't have to do the whole formality, like you do at council meetings, with the address and all of that, just if you let us know your name, so we know who you are.
My name is Stephanie McIntyre, and I live on the corner of Rio Grande and St. Helier. And my question is, do you have any information about the stadiums that are in existence now? What percentage are they full? Are they usually maxed out? Are they usually, you know, low attendance? I'm interested in what the attendance is at these stadiums.
Sure, sure. That's a very good question. I, right off the top of my head, I don't have that information. One of the things we mentioned in the presentation, we did have a, a study done on the feasibility of a stadium around here, and if I recall correctly, I believe that's in, in that information, and Austin may actually have that information readily available.
Yes, so, it averages about 50% attendance, and it really kinda depends upon the stadium and the team. So, they average 50% is what, what that feasibility study came back with.
So, that, that gives you a sense of what, of, of what we could potentially see here. Obviously, there are a number of different factors that could make it higher here, could potentially make it lower, but all of the indications were, as you saw in the presentation, that most of the factors tend to work more in our favor than against. So, if we were to use that as a metric, I think there's a good chance that it would probably be higher here than the average.
And Mayor, just to kinda quantify that a little bit, most of those places that averaged closer to that 50%, those stadiums are higher seats. Ours will be 4,500, these ones are over 5,000 or over 7,000 seats.
Okay, that, that is a good point. So, if you're talking about absolute number of seats, then obviously, it's gonna be much higher than 50% in a smaller stadium, so.
Yeah, I was just gonna add, that point is, we intentionally, we went to that 4,500 number because it's on the smaller side, and we expect to sell out, but our revenue projections that you did, those don't assume a sellout, they are based on the study, they're based on a 60% sales rate, or attendance rate.
So, that's, that's what our assumptions are based off of, is a 60%, which, in light of that, seems fair.
Stephanie, that study is in the July packet. If you go onto the council website and look at agendas, in the July packet has that study that we are, they're referencing now, so I think it starts at page 568, so.
Austin, is that study also, is it linked on the Town Center page as well, or? And even if it's not, we'll make sure that it's linked, so if you, if you don't wanna go digging through the packet, we'll also make sure, if you go to our, the city website and go to Economic Development, down towards the bottom of that menu, you go to Town Center, we'll make sure that the study's available there if you wanna look at more detail. Yeah. So, Mark, if you wanna come up and ask a question?
Can I add one more thing to this comment?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I also did wanna just throw in that the percentage of seats filled is making those stadiums profitable. I know it's hard to compare apples to apples when you're comparing MLB, but that amount of attendance is making the stadiums profitable, and they're doing well.
My name's Mark Malloy, and my question is, with this KHJR development plan, and they're going to buy the land for $8.2 million, and then, from what I was hearing here, is you're saying that the taxpayers of the City of Jersey Village will only be out a maximum of $7 million in this development plan?
That's the maximum amount of the incentive, yeah.
And so, then, the estimated cost of this sports stadium from the study was $27 million to $33 million. So, the infrastructure with the water lines, the sewer lines, the sewer treatment plant, any of those other things, are those things that the taxpayers of JV are gonna be paying for, or is KHJR gonna be paying for that?
So, the, the letter of intent that we have right now has KHJR building the stadium, building the town hall, or building the city hall, they would also build out the infrastructure that is there. Keep in mind that the water and sewer lines are largely already there. When, when Senate, when, when the, when Jones Road was extended to that part of the city, the water and sewer mains will run there. Obviously, there will be connections that need to be run to the property itself, but they, they would be responsible for the cost of that as well. As far as all of the other infrastructure, that, that would be their responsibility as well.
This will be, the 33 acres that you guys already own, and, you know, you're saying that an area of that land, the property, is gonna be allocated by KHJR once they purchase the land for a new city hall complex, and what's the other, was that the only?
It's the stadium and city hall.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. If, if you have any questions, if, if you wanna even line up, that's fine, I mean, I, go ahead, Judy, come on up. I mean, obviously, at this stage, everyone's taking their first shot at things, so, don't feel like you have to raise your hand, just walk right up. If you have to wait behind the person that's speaking, that's fine as well. I think that'll make it much more efficient. Judy, go right ahead.
Hey, good evening. My name is Judy Yarbury. Bobby and I've had conversations over the years regarding this development, Ters 2, and I am in kind of a wait-and-see situation, but I think my biggest concern, which was somewhat addressed, is we build it, and they will come. I'm concerned about traffic, logistics, the train, who pays for that? How does that impact our citizens? And kinda like you elaborate on that.
Sure. First of all, it's not so much that if we build it, they will come, they're coming, and therefore, we're building it. We're, we're not building it unless someone's there. If there's no ownership group, we're not building it. That, that's, this is all under the premise that, that we've got everything in place as far as the, the ownership. The, as far as traffic, that's, that's very much a legitimate concern. It's something we see around here all of the time. We believe that the current infrastructure will largely support the additional traffic on that side. Now, if for any reason, if we identify the need for additional infrastructure, then we, that's a good problem to have, because what that assumes is that it's extraordinarily popular, it's doing a tremendous amount of business, and therefore, there is ample revenue to be able to afford to build out additional infrastructures needed. Keep in mind that, that we do have the tax increment reinvestment zone number two over there, and so, any additional revenues that are generated by that development will be available for reinvestment into that, into that development. So, if, if there's additional traffic that requires additional infrastructure, we'll be prepared to be able to build that out as needed. But we think for right now, that, that what we have over there will suffice for the uses, and particularly during the times that, that it would be utilized. So, Mark, go ahead.
Mark Zaler, and my question deals mainly with the CSL study.
Mm-hmm.
And my concern is, is city council aware or focused on, it's deeply flawed in three major respects. And, and the first major one is its key assumption. Its key assumption is basing all of its numbers and all of its financial projections on the performance as markers, the other teams of the, the American Association League.
Mm-hmm.
The problem with that is, for the most part, all those teams are located in markets that have no competition from Major League or Minor League Baseball, as the study represents that fact. So, we're taking a situation off the numbers of a market that truly is not representative of ours. I mean, just think about, if you have an opportunity to see a Major League or a Minor League, or some other team that you've never heard of, both are within that same roughly 30-minute drive that, that our market is from. And so, that's a major, and, and part of the study says, it's the anchor for the whole development.
Sure.
And so, if it goes down, everything goes down. The second, the second major flaw in, in looking at these numbers is there is no serious analysis in the study, other than a general reference that there's two major arteries as to the traffic flow. You know, within a 45-minute window, you're gonna be moving 4,500 people into a stadium and out of the stadium. Obviously, the Jones 290 is, is difficult as it is.
Well, hopefully, they're not all driving their own car. I mean, I would imagine a lot of times, it's gonna be a family outing.
Yeah, even in the family, I mean, it would take, it would, well, you wouldn't normally have one person traveling, okay? But then, take the parking situation, you got like 1,400 parking spots, so you'd have to have each car taking at least three people, and that's assuming that all that other parking is not used by the rest of the mixed development. It's, and the problem with the study is, there's no real discussion of it, there's no real analysis of that, and, and those things can be key to the overall performance. And the last major problem I have with, with the study, that I'm curious if anybody's focused on, is the analysis and conclusions aren't what will happen. It's not an estimate of what's probable, or an estimate what's most likely. The whole study is replete with estimates of what could happen. Look how many times that study, the estimate goes to, this could happen. Well, I, I don't have any confidence on that, and, and, you know, the biggest concern, this is not, respect to your comment, this is not being market-driven. I mean, the vast majority of Jersey Village residents don't even think we could support such a team, and so, there's not a big outcry of the community. It's almost if a few people were brainstorming, what could we do with this property? And we don't have to take the risk. So, you guys may have all examined these things, and this may be old news, but I'd be interested to see, you know, what you guys.
Sure. First of all, I, so, so, Mark, looking at your first point, the question of, are these markets anything even similar to Jersey Village? Most of them are. I, I'm, I'm not sure which ones you were looking at, but for example, there was a Milwaukee Milkman, I believe is one of them. That, that is a suburb of Milwaukee. Milwaukee is not exactly a small town. The Chicago team is also in a suburb of one of the largest metropolitan areas in, in the country.
My point on that, Bobby, was that the study itself says all these, for the most part, all these teams are located in markets that aren't in any way served by Major League Baseball or Minor League Baseball.
I'd have to look at the study to see where you saw that, but I.
It said it, it said it in two locations, and after the meeting, I'd be happy to. It said it, it said it in two locations, and after the meeting, I'd be happy to kind of reference it to you.
Yeah.
But if that's true, then the whole study is flawed because of anchoring on a market that's not having the competition that we would have here.
Well, I will tell you this, that at least without knowing what, without knowing off the top of my head, and you know, despite what many may believe, I don't memorize all of the documentation I read here at city council. But the, the study, if I remember correctly, when it was looking at a market, when it defined a market, it was not looking at, say, a media market, which would be, you know, thousands of square, you know, a huge amount of space.
It was defining its market within a roughly 30-minute drive. And the problem with that is downtown Houston and Sugar Land is roughly a 30-minute drive.
Sure.
It defines its market in those terms.
So, so first of all, we have to keep in mind, I think we can agree that Sugar Land is roughly, I mean, obviously, there's a little bit of a difference, roughly about the same distance from Minute Maid Park as we are. Maybe we're a little bit closer. But I don't think that it's enough of a distance to make a huge difference in terms of a market analysis. The Sugar Land Skeeters, being a part of the Atlantic League, did, well, now they're the Space Cowboys, but we're talking about, I don't want to compare, I don't want to compare this, this potential stadium with a AAA affiliate. Totally different. But at that time, the Sugar Land Skeeters, when they were in the Atlantic League, they obviously did very well despite being located very close to a market with the Houston Astros. And, and, and so I get what you're saying, which is the concern that is, is this team, does this team have the potential to compete well despite the fact that you have a Major League team that just won a World Series on your doorstep?
And the minor league teams that feed into it.
Sure.
And I sugar lands 118,000 population with a 7,500.
Sure.
We're at 8,000 population with a 4,000.
And we're not going to check people's residency at the door. We'll let everybody in.
I understand that.
Yeah, so.
We want the size of the community that bid off that risk.
Yes. We, the analysis that was done for the market feasibility was based on the wide area, not the 8,000 people in Jersey Village, which is why, the same reason we did a survey of the wide area, yeah.
30-minute drive.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, that brings in the competition.
Yeah.
I want to believe, I just want you guys to see it and focus on it, and then maybe when you take a closer look, you'll find, well, the reference I did to the, to the competition and lack of it is not going, you're going to find out.
Yeah. Let's, let's sit down with the study because trust me, my interest, and I'm sure my colleagues on council would agree, my interest is not in being right or wrong. My interest is in getting the facts and making sure we understand it. If there's, if there is something that we have missed that is a flaw, obviously, at this point, the reason we're having this town hall now is because we have a deal that is a non-binding deal, which means that there's still an opportunity for us to get as much input as possible, to try to understand the desires of the community. But it also gives us an opportunity to look at the study and make sure that if there's some significant flaws, we can look into that more closely and try to close that gap.
And the other reason I raised that point is, and I was shocked when the study said that, I'm going, we're basing all our financial projections on these markets that have no direct competition from Major League, Minor League Baseball? It's crazy. I mean, anyway.
Yeah. I think, I think the Cubs, the White Sox, and the Brewers would differ a little bit.
What the study said itself.
Sure, 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 sure. And I think, is Cleveland just south of Dallas-Fort Worth? So that was another one.
So out of, out of the teams in the American Association, five of them are within a 30-minute drive of Major League Baseball stadiums. You've got the Gator in Indiana, you've got the two, one in Milwaukee, one outside, and then you've got Cleveland that's 35 minutes away from the Rangers Stadium.
I did not do it independently. I'm just relying on what the study.
Sure, sure. Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at it, and if you want to point me exactly, I mean, if you either want to shoot me an email or we can meet up and look at it, I want to make sure that we get it right.
I want to take every last time, but.
All very good points.
Flaws, I just can't get it right.
Sure, sure, sure. We want to make sure we get it right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Mayor, can you, this mic is really hot.
Sorry, everyone's voice is coming out from behind me, so I don't know what you're.
There were several other things that Mark commented that I'd like to address. You're right, the study leaves a lot to be designed in some areas, but it was a feasibility study on, could the area support a team? And if so, what size team? As far as parking traffic, so that is an area that I might actually have some expertise in, training, years of experience in managing very large crowds and traffic managements within them. And there will be more study for that and for the stadium, but the stadium's a 4,500-person stadium. The roads are well within what you can manage, and if they needed to be augmented, you can have officer-controlled lights, you can, traffic plans could take care of this very easily. There are a number of venues within Houston that have far larger capacities and smaller roads and are able to overcome that. Parking numbers, you're right, it's a multifaceted location, and there's some parking challenges. Parking codes look at that, and they calculate how many people the stadium has and the entertainment venue, and they allow for some sharing. All of that will be well studied before anything's approved.
Yeah. All good points. Thank you. Joe, go right ahead.
Hi, Joe Pennington. I have one observation first before I have a question, is that it seems that the city government is a little challenged right now in resources and/or commitment to accomplishing the golf course, community center, entertainment venue? No, we're not challenged?
No. I mean, if you've, if you've got some suggestions, Joe, or some concerns, I mean.
I'll follow up. So beyond that, is there any studies done on the collateral crime impact and also the emergency services, calls for service demand analysis done? Because right now, in the whole country, our law enforcement communities are severely challenged in even hiring people. And so when you bring in that number of people from points, east, north, south, and west, you're going to wind up with the collateral crime coming with it. And I don't know where we're going to, unless we're going to expand our resources here for us in, in the city, for police and fire, I think this would be a huge.
Yeah.
And in the words of the city of Houston's mayor, stuff does happen. And so unanticipated outcomes of a business decision, I think, would be something we need to consider, especially the crime situation.
Sure.
Harris County and Houston.
Well, in the words of Jersey Village's mayor, Mayor Turner wishes he had Jersey Village Police Department, Jersey Village Fire Department behind his back to help the situation.
Well.
But to your point, I, no, this is.
Questions were whatever, but the problem is the, the true nature of the criminal element today is not what it has been in the past. And our, our officers are not in ready supply like they were.
Well, I would tell you this, Joe, we, we have, in my time.
I'll sit down.
Yeah, I've been on, I've been on city council now almost six years, and there have been exactly zero times we have ever denied Jersey Village Fire Department or Police Department anything that they ever asked us for. Part of that's a testament to our city council, part of that's a testament to the fact that our police and fire departments only really come to us when they need something, but every time we give it to them. And we, one of the main reasons why we wanted to ensure, as we pursued economic development, we wanted to ensure that we were able to tie a source of funding, as we have with the Police Department, with the Crime Control and Prevention District, we wanted to be able to provide our fire department with the same sort of funding that as we grew, we knew that the fire department would also have a dedicated source of funding that would grow with them. And so as you saw in the slides, we anticipate that this will generate additional revenues for both of those funds, and we believe that we will be able to provide them with the tools that they need in order to allow this growth to happen in a safe way. I've talked, talked with Chief Riggs about it before. One of the things that we have been big advocates for here in the city of Jersey Village is leveraging technology in order to allow our police officers to do the best work that is meant for a police officer, an individual who uses their skills and their training to solve crimes, and to leverage technology in ways to be able to create a force multiplier that will allow those officers to be put in the right place at the right time, to do so in a safe manner. And I, I think we can continue to do that. The flock cameras that we have in place now, I wish we could charge other jurisdictions for getting their, their crooks off the street, because most of the people we pick up are not committing crimes in Jersey Village. They're people we find that are out on bond or, you know, are, have otherwise had warrants issued for their arrest. So we're kind of on the soap class on that front. I'm confident that we can continue that process and find ways to be able to ensure that our officers can keep us all safe the same way that they've done in the recent past. So I, I think we'll get it done right. So, yes, sir, go right ahead.
My name's Andrew Brown. Thank you so much. I really appreciated the analysis on the average length of a franchise or an ownership group. That's, a lot of my initial questions related to that, and I appreciate, you know, a feasibility study, but just like to hear a little bit more about your, your analysis on the what-if scenario, if it, if it didn't last. And particularly, I wanted to ask about ownership. You said, you know, we're not going to build it if, and then they'll come, it's if they come. Are there typical contract terms for ownership of the American Association that they commit to a certain number of years? Or what does that look like just for, with regard to ownership and the use of the facility for long-term, should things happen and it not work out financially?
I'm going to defer to our city manager because I think he's done a little bit more research on that.
Yeah, so leases, leases can run kind of a gamut of length. Typically, they're at least 20 years, at least 20 years. And the lease really kind of defines the terms of everything that you're looking for there. There's a lot of leases, I mean, cities all across the country have stadiums like this, and so they do, I mean, those leases are all public information. We've grabbed a lot of them to kind of use that as a lot of the information that we, we can try and glean from. There are some stadiums that the tenants have left, and typically, those cities are able, either, either able to get a new baseball tenant or convert it to a different type of use. I know one up in the Dallas area just switched over to cricket, as cricket became quite popular up there. So they were without baseball for a year and a half, I believe, before cricket came in and took over that, that space.
Yeah. So I, you know, obviously, I think our, our goal is to ensure that we have a lease in place that at least covers our obligation on, on the construction. You know, we want to be able to cover the, you know, the cost of that, so. Ashley Garnett.
He took my first question, so my second question, I guess, is more for Austin and Robert. So you build the facility, you build the city hall, does that mean you move all of our entertainment in the city to those organizations? And then does that also mean that, like the July 4th and all those things that were growing, does that all move over there because it'll have a facility that could facilitate more people but take it out of what we've all grown to love?
I don't think there's any push to take 4th of July out of, out of the year, out of the community. The Christmas, the holiday in the village event, that we just had, you know, 2,500 people here the other day. That parade, I mean, it's all a part of it, and that goes right down Lakeview, Wall Street. I think there'd be a strong push to keep those, those here. So I, at this point in time, I don't think there'd be any plan to move any of those events.
Yeah, I, I think, to be honest, I've not looked at this so much as a question of subtraction. I've looked at it as a question of addition. Hopefully, there's so much stuff going on over there that it's not like there's going to be a whole lot of extra capacity to, to move anything. We'll probably have a ton of stuff happening over there just by virtue of the fact that the stadium's there. But, you know, if there's an opportunity to expand events and to have other community events over there, I think that would be a great thing. But as far as anything changing over here that's already here, I don't see any reason to move it. I'm sure that the, you know, being on Parks and Recreation Committee, that's probably going to be, you know, it's just going to give you all more options to decide what, what, what works for the citizens. I mean, we, whatever the situation is, we want to make sure that it's something that, that is good for the citizens and has buy-in from everyone, so. Jim, yeah?
My name's Jim Fields, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for allowing me to contribute tonight. I have a couple of questions, I'll get back in line, but first one is, why won't you let us vote on it?
I'm sorry, was that a question?
Yes. Why won't you let us vote on this?
I, the, so the law of the state.
Stadium.
Law of the state of Texas, law of the state of Texas, and our charter limit the instances in which voters are, where we could actually have voters vote on a question. We can't just put a question on the ballot, say, do you think we should do X, Y, Z?
Well, you can do a referendum and, and say, okay, do you want to do, and then majority of the citizens say, we don't want to do it, then don't do it. It's that simple.
Jim, you agree we have to follow the law, correct?
It's a non-binding referendum.
Yes, but you agree the way, I mean, what I'm telling you is that there have been cities, there are attorney general letters, opinions that have been issued, that have said that unless state law, unless your charter gives you the ability to have that election, then it's considered misuse of public funds because you're using public funds for a purpose that is not allowed under law or under your charter.
Well, that leads into another thing. Where did the $30 million come from? The last 10 years, did you guys accumulate it? We're, we're saying we need to have these revenues. Where did all that money come from? Why are we being taxed?
Are we referring to something regarding the subject of this town hall?
That's, well, you use the money to buy the land over there, of course it is.
Okay. Well, it's taxpayer money.
Yeah, but where did it all come from?
From the taxpayers.
Right, okay. And so in the meantime, we're still paying property taxes here, but accumulating almost up to, last I counted, it was like 29 million. So we're being overtaxed, Mayor.
Okay, Jim, I understand, but just that I think is a separate issue that, first of all, you're, no, hold on. As I said, we want to have a limit to about 90 seconds per person. I think that's probably about the limit of it.
It would be a bond, we'd have to vote on a bond for this.
So, so Jim, first of all, I want to make sure that everyone understands, because this is a common, common sort of misunderstanding. I sometimes hear from people, they say, you know, I remember back in early 2000s, we voted on these projects. What you voted on was debt for those projects. State law requires that if you were going to issue bonds, bonds that are guaranteed by your property taxes, then you have a right to vote whether or not the city should go into debt where your property taxes are put out there as the guarantee for that debt. And that's the reason why voters vote on those matters. Voters don't vote on the projects, they vote on the debt.
So refund all?
And, well, hold on, Jim, hold on. I'm, I'm, I'm making sure that we get this clear.
I mean.
And if you, if you have another question, you're welcome to get back in line.
I'm going to finish the statement.
But the, the question of whether or not voters should be able to vote on a certain project, and frankly, I think we should all consider it a point of pride that the city is on the verge of being at the point where it's completely debt-free. How many cities in this state, much less in this area, can say that they have zero debt? And yet, the, the problem is that that practice is being kind of held out as, as if it's something that's nefarious or, or somehow trying to deny voters their rights. That's not the point at all. The point is to try to do things in a way that's fiscally responsible, that does not put the city in a situation where it's not able to pay its bills because it takes out debt that it cannot then repay. But the key here is that ultimately, at the end of the day, the people that you elected to represent you, who are standing up here, are operating the city government by the rules that you put in place. This is a charter that the voters put in place, that the voters have on multiple occasions have changed when they felt like there was a need to change it, and they are free to do so at any time. So, you know, we, we can have a, a separate conversation about whether or not this form of government still meets the needs of its citizens. I'm not sitting up here and telling you that I think 100% it is, but I think that's a separate conversation from the conversation we're trying to have right now. One of the reasons we wanted to have this town hall is because.
It's completely related.
Let me finish, Jim.
Yes, sir.
The reason we wanted to have this town hall was because we wanted to ensure that we got in all the ways possible, as much input as we can. We may not be able to have an election on this, but if we didn't care what citizens thought, we wouldn't be sitting up here now, we wouldn't be sitting up here again in a few weeks, we wouldn't be taking phone calls and emails and all the things we do in order to get as much input as possible.
Let me just finish this.
Yes.
You collected $29 million, okay?
I'll take your word for it. I don't have the numbers in front of me.
Yes, we have. You used a part of that money to spend over here for buying that land, okay? And you need to tell everybody how that happened. A developer was going to go ahead and develop it over there, you guys rezoned it, well, off topic, but you rezoned.
I don't know if you, I don't know if you came in late, Jim, we covered that at the beginning.
Yeah, but I want to make sure everybody understands that.
Okay.
That's what happened. It was just a one-liner, it didn't say anything about what actually happened.
Jim, here's the thing, I'm going to have to. Here's the thing, I'm going to have to ask you to go back in line because the reason we put the 90-second rule in is this is not a place for people to come in here and stand on a soapbox on their issue.
They need to have information, they need to understand what's going on.
Please be respectful of everyone else who has questions that are waiting to have their questions answered, so. Folks, just to reemphasize, it's not that I, I want people to have an opportunity to have their questions answered here, but this is not an opportunity for folks to, you know, sort of pick their favorite topic and decide that they're going to use the opportunity to subject everyone else to that who are here for a completely different reason. There are ample opportunities to do that elsewhere. Please be respectful of the purpose for which everyone else is here, and let's try to keep the subject as germane to this project as we can. So, Joe, go right ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't clarify my question a while ago, obviously, because I wanted to make sure that y'all understood that I had no doubt that the city, the residents, and of course, the government, all police departments should be as lucky as ours is. So, I know you have, we have the support of council and the citizens for our department, but my concern is no matter how much money we throw at, if we were able to double their strength and to give them as much money as the chief wanted, he couldn't find the bodies to hire, to put in place. If you do a crime prevention through environmental design, you might be able to get a quantitative analysis of a work's demand, but that's my major concern about right now in Harris County because we have a tremendously broken criminal justice system. And so, from the courthouse to the city hall, unless we have the infrastructure to be able to provide the personnel, our public safety is at risk. So, that's why I was wanting to make sure that.
Sure.
If there's anything I can volunteer to do to help in that regard, please.
Well, Joe, if we got you patrolling the streets, then I.
No, 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 no.
I figured those days are past, right?
I'm being serious about the, something as simple as a crime prevention through environmental design, SEP-TED study, but also to do the work demands analysis of both police and fire, and also identify where do we get these new officers from.
Sure, I, so, first of all, I'm.
And that's, that's, and I'll get out of the way and let you.
Yeah, first of all, I'm not going to pretend that I'm a law enforcement officer. I'm obviously not. In fact, I think my law degree probably sends me the other direction, probably makes me ill-suited for one. It's just a different way of thinking. But I trust Chief Riggs, I trust his command staff to let us know when things like this might present problems, to point them out, to let us know what might be needed, what solutions are available. Out of curiosity, Chief, how staffing, you got any open positions?
Yes, we do, but the reason we do have staffing levels is we're very selective.
Okay.
We could hire cops today. We vet them very seriously to get the best cops here.
I would say that's actually probably, I think the staffing probably has been more stable at the Jersey Village Police Department lately than it has been in a number of years. Would you say that's probably accurate?
It's very accurate.
I mean, movement in law enforcement is pretty common, and it's good because it gives our, it gives law enforcement officers the best opportunity to do what's best for their family. But, I'm hopeful that if we, you know, one of the things I just, my mayor's newsletter that's going to be going out with the utility bill this month points out that the city of Jersey Village was named by the Houston Chronicle, one of the best workplaces for 2022. Thank you. And that's important because sometimes, and whether it's law enforcement or with our emergency services or with any other department in the city, sometimes it's not just about the pay, sometimes it's about the environment, it's about the culture, and we try to cultivate that in a manner that ensures that we're able to keep the best people and recruit the best people, and that's going to be a combination of cultures, it's going to be a combination of benefits and pay and providing them the best environment to do their craft. And I'm confident that between that, and the reason I brought up technology, Joe, is you're right, that is a concern always when you've, when you've got staffing issues, and that's why I brought up the technology issue because that's one of the things that we can utilize to try to ensure that our police officers are used in the best way possible so that we are able to keep people safe with the staffing levels we have. With that being said, I'm confident that if we need to, I'm sure when it happens, I'm sure when that development happens, we'll need to hire some additional officers. That's, there's no doubt, but I have no doubt in the world that we'll be able to do that. I think we've had good luck in being able to do that and doing that with high-quality people, so. Hopefully, that, did I cover that? Okay, good deal. Frank, go right ahead.
Frank Marleau, live on St. Hillia. I don't know whether I'm in favor or against this project, and that's why I come here, for to get an education and to be very informed to me. So, I have two comments. One is, the property that's over that we own, I think, is the prime piece of property over there when you look at it with the trees. A lot area over there doesn't have any trees. I want to know, do we have anything in development where they can only eliminate so many trees? Go to the Woodlands and see what they've done. Go to Cy Fair High School and look how they stripped those, I don't know how many acres to put up this big development over there, took all those trees out, and then they'll go back in there and put three or four, five-inch trees in there. We need to be ahead of that curve by saying, and I don't know how you do it, but we need to check with Woodlands because they have preserved a lot of trees out there. The other comment, what I meant, I want to get some information on is, who paid for this survey? A possible developer or did the city? Because you know, if I hire somebody to work for me, they're going to tilt it towards me. So, do we have any skin in this project?
You're talking about the stadiums, the feasibility study?
Yes, you know, when they come in with these numbers and say it's good, I don't know, so I'm not saying it's good or bad. Who's paying for it, and do we have anything today to protect our trees for tomorrow?
Sure, so, sure, thank you, Frank. So, the city paid for the feasibility study. So, we, the study was done by CSL, right? If I got the name right. They're one of the premier firms out there who perform economic studies, particularly regarding sports facilities. I believe they're the ones that performed the study for the city of Sugar Land before they built Constellation Field. They've done a number of studies all throughout the country, so we are confident that 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 study was done in a way that was interested in preserving the city's interests. I understand what you're saying, Frank, where it's, people want to, people want to, you know, tilt towards who's paying the bill. I totally get that inclination, or at least the belief for the, you know, I think it does happen, I don't know that, I'm not going to say that it happened in this case, but I get the concern. But we did pay for it, it was not paid for by the developer. I feel like it was, there was nothing from it that led me to believe that the study was in any way biased either for or against the project. So, but, again, as I mentioned when others have brought up the study, if anyone has concerns or they want to point out some flaws, I want to know about them because now is the time to revisit that and make sure that it's, that we've got as accurate of information as we have available to us. So, as far as the trees, I don't know if the zoning laws have any requirements. Do you know off the top of your head?
We're, you know, we're going to address that in the new, oh, we did, commercial development.
You got Rick Faircloth, the chairman of our Planning and Zoning Commission chiming in, letting us know that it's on the table. But I will say this, because we do have Chris Kay from KHJR present, try not to utilize you too much, but I, just to kind of provide you at least some information, and this is all in the letter of intent as part of the attachments, if you at least look at the preliminary layout, it looks like it's got a tremendous amount of trees. Now, obviously, some are going to be cleared as the development occurs, but it looks like the intention is to keep as much natural beauty of that land and the surrounding area as possible. So, yeah, Frank, I think, you know, obviously, we won't be able to keep all of it, but we want to keep as much of that as we can. There's going to be a lot of green space over there, and I think it would be, I think people are going to be very impressed with the natural beauty that accompanies the development. It's not going to be your typical, just, you know, it definitely is going to be a lot better than if we had not bought this land and had that paved over with, you know, car lots for dealerships and warehouses, which is what it would have been otherwise, so.
It's been a long time since I looked at our landscape. I believe there are some standards, I know IBC, I think, has some standards, it sounds like they're going to look at something.
The other thing I would.
The other thing I would point out is the Woodlands is not a city and has more authority under state law than what we do, and they also have the Woodlands covenants, which are not under state law, they're exceptionally powerful tool that we do not have.
Well, like an HOA.
That is one of the reasons there is one mall, one concert venue, one convention center. They were able to dictate a lot of things we cannot legally dictate.
And frankly, it's also the reason every time I go to the Woodlands, I can't find anything because every sign, every sign is tiny and it's blocked by a tree. So, you know, be careful what you wish for, I suppose, but I get, but Frank, you've got a good point. We want to preserve as much natural beauty over there as possible, and I think that's, I think there's, Chris, did you want to add to that as well?
Pete.
Chris, if you want to come to the mic, just so people who are watching might be able to hear.
The idea of the development is that it's going to be a very pedestrian-centric wellness environment, so we're.
Can you speak into the microphone?
We're very sensitive to the environment. The fact that it's surrounded by an industrial park makes it really challenging from a development standpoint, so we need those trees as a buffer so that it can create, you know, and enhance the environment once we do the development because it's all about the experience. So, that's, and that's what architects are going to work on, but we're going to save a lot of those trees, and there's reserve plots that are part of the retention that are going to be wooded as well.
Thank you, Chris. Sorry, James, you were next.
I'm going to limit your responses to 90 seconds as well, Mayor.
Oh, okay.
But I do want to say.
Again, I want to agree on that.
Chief Riggs, I guess that's why my application was denied, you're that strict, so I'll look elsewhere. But my question really is, kind of to the tax point, the numbers that were thrown up, first off, for the sales tax, I know that's an abatement, you said 20 years, right? Is there a max per year on that?
So, we haven't negotiated all the fine details, but it's $7 million or 20 years, whichever's first.
So, there's not currently a per-year cap, there is an overall cap.
So, the first 7 million, they get to keep?
Oh, no, so it's 50% split.
50%, that's okay, that's what I want to make kind of clear to everybody, that we do get sales tax money from them, it's not, we don't have to spend 7 million.
After the 7 million, then we get 100%.
Right, and then for the property taxes, that alters two area property taxes, the numbers that were shown? So, that technically doesn't go to this.
All 33 of those acres are in TERS 2, so those would be kept into that TERS area there.
For just another, what, how long that was, 30 years?
It's as long as the TERS is in existence.
2047, I believe.
Yeah, I would say, we, yeah, I guess that's the current, yeah.
The current. That's when it started. Okay, that's one clarification on the sales tax, that we do get some of it, but that doesn't touch the half-percents, at least the half-percent fire, right?
The city would get 160,000 approximately, and then fire control and crime control would each get 160,000, so there'd be, you know, 160,000 times three.
And that for the revenue of ballpark, the bowling alley, is everything?
All the development.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But it does not include, if there's additional development that happens in the surrounding area because of it, then that's obviously in addition to that, so.
Mayor.
Mayor, can you start repeating our questions because some people online are not able to hear their question?
Yeah, why don't we, hold on one second.
Does it still open up, or is that? Yes. Thank you, thanks.
Okay, go right ahead.
Thank you, my name's Shayna Brown. Thank you, guys, for hosting this town hall. It's been really helpful, I appreciate it. I have two questions related to the developer. One, what kind of projects have they completed in the past, and what kind of stadium projects have they completed in the past?
Chris, do you want to field that?
Sure.
Now, you're not building the stadium, correct?
Well, no, we're not building it, but we'll manage the process alone as a master developer. So, I've been in this business for about 32 years. I did many, many Houston Green, Hilton Center.
Chris, if you can speak right into the mic, we just want to make sure our online viewers can.
As far as baseball stadiums of this time, I've never built one or developed one. We're really excited about the opportunity, but in the development, we think it's going to generate demand for all the other components of the development. We specialize in mixed-use development. The last project we finished was in Henderson, Nevada, $2 billion. Remember, some of this got removed.
It's off? Oh, hold on, let me make sure this.
Here, let's move it over. There you go.
Hopefully, it's back on.
There it is, yes, it is. Okay, thank you very much. And then, just as a follow-up question, you were talking about the studies, and I know that the concern was, is it skewed toward the one paying for it? Has the city considered getting an outside party or a third party to do additional, like to do the same study to see kind of how they work together, if they're saying the same things, if they're saying different things?
We haven't, but, I mean, it, the key was, we wanted to make sure we had an independent study done by someone that we were paying for that wasn't beholden to anyone else from a group that is considered the market leader in that field. So, we could get a second opinion, but, I mean, we kind of got an opinion from the group that's considered to be the gold standard. We would probably be getting it, I mean, I'm sure it would be another good, solid opinion, but, you know, keep in mind, the other thing, and this kind of ties back into your question about the stadium, my understanding is that oftentimes, when these stadiums are built, someone doesn't just build a stadium and the team just shows up and sees it and goes, "Oh, I guess this is our home." The team, which frankly, I will say this, I, obviously, we can't say who is the current interested party that would own the team, but I don't think it's going too far to say this group has ample experience on building and running successful minor league teams. And so, I am confident that if they're involved in the process, and if they're on board and they think that it can work here, that I think then that's additional confirmation, independent confirmation from someone who's going to have skin in the game, that it will work, that the stadium is designed in a way that will be successful. Because minor league, you know, for anyone who's been into a minor league ballpark, it really is not, I mean, yes, the product on the field is important, but I think more than anywhere else, when you're talking about, and when I say minor league, of course, I mean also unaffiliated ball that's kind of on the level of minor league, the product in the stand sometimes is more important to the success of that team than on the field, and that's the expertise that they're going to bring.
Okay, well, I just, just because I noticed some of the questions, just some of the questions you had about the study and then some of the other questions, I wondered if the city might consider it, but, yeah, thank you, guys.
Yeah, we'll have, there will be independent confirmation. If this all continues as it is, and we get to the point where we're building this, the expertise will be more than ample all the way around, for sure.
Mayor, can I make a request really quick?
Sure.
The question about, oh, I'm so sorry, this is a hot mic. The question about your previous experience from KHJR, I know that I've received many emails about that, and it's been a big topic, but your mic went off and nobody at home heard your answer. Would you mind just repeating that for us, please? No, I'm sorry, thank you.
My personal experience, I've been in this business for 30-plus years. I've done a great deal with the city of Houston, including downtown Hilton Americas and Toyota Center and all the sports complexes. I was originally, when I was much younger and an architect, involved with the Sugar Land Mall Development and Town Center. I've done mixed-use and urban planning, I'm an architect my whole career, and the company as a whole, the last project we finished is about $1.2 billion mixed-use development, pedestrian-centric, similar to this, only a little bit bigger, in Henderson, Nevada, and it recently completed less than a year ago. It did not have a stadium. I've never done a minor league baseball stadium, and, you know, it, the point about the market study, we wanted to do a market study, and the city chose to do it because they wanted to keep it independent. It's obviously very important to us for that stadium to be successful because that's a demand generator that we're basing a lot of our economics and betting on that is going to help the development be successful, so we're very interested in making sure that not only the study's correct, but the stadium is sized correctly, the operator is the right operator, so we're.
So, we're working very closely with the city to perfect all those things.
Great. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you for repeating that. Appreciate you.
I have a statement and then a question. So, the lady who did your study, Taylor, she and I went to college together. We studied economics. I'm not saying I agree with all of her analysis, but she's a very honest person, so I trust what she said is what she believed, just as an independent person who critiques you guys.
I'll take that as a solid endorsement, sure.
So, anyways, why is this a good idea to do, given our current economic situations that we're going in? And how are we going to prevent our city taking economic hurt, given everything that's going on?
Those are very, very good questions. So, the first question is, given the current situation where, you know, I'm assuming, just to elaborate, where we're looking at some of the worst inflation we've seen in years, where there's a lot of uncertainty, why would we do this now? The answer to that is because, and this is not just my opinion, but I think that you look at all of the indicators out there, this is a temporary situation. This is not something where we're looking to be up and running and doing business in a year. We're several years out. If you look at all economic indicators right now, yes, inflation is an issue, but I can tell you that all of the other indicators, in terms of industrial production, in terms of spending, when you're talking about, you know, consumer spending, when you're talking about employment, all of those numbers are very solid. And there's no guarantee that those are going to continue in that same direction. We've all, you know, we've all seen the economy come and go, go up and down. I will say this, most, most studies and economic sort of studies on how people spend their money tends to point to the fact that people may decide that in uncertain times, they may not go on vacation to another state, or they may not go on vacation to another country. They may not go out and buy some nice new car. They may, you know, there's a lot of things, a lot of luxury, quote-unquote, items that people may not spend their money on. What they may do, though, is they may decide to go out to an amusement park instead, or they may decide to go out to a baseball game instead. Maybe they don't go to an Astros game, but maybe they decide to go to a minor league game instead. So, not to say that all of this is recession-proof, if a recession were to come along, or that, and not to dismiss the current economic situation, although most indicators are that inflation is starting to ease and that maybe the worst is behind us. But I do think that this sort of development is not something that is inherently risky because of the current economic situation. I think we can still do this in a way that is going to be successful. And when you're talking about something that needs to be, you know, that you're talking about not a couple of years, but you're talking about a couple of decades, obviously, there's going to be ups and downs the whole way. So, you have to be prepared for that as part of your calculations. So, I think we'll be all right on that. Sorry, I got so into that question that I think there was another part to the question you said, oh, and how to protect the city? Thank you. There was another part of that. And that is, the reason why that's a very important point is because that can be an issue that's missed if you're just relying on the occasional, like, social media post about this project. One of the things that Austin mentioned in his presentation is, and in case you missed the acronym, it was LGC, but it stands for Local Government Corporation. So, if any of you have small businesses or you have owned a small business in the past, there's probably a good chance that you have utilized, at that time, a limited liability company or an LLC. And if you haven't used one yourself, you've probably heard of it or known somebody who does. LGCs are kind of similar in that regard to an LLC, or even a small corporation. They are designed to protect a person's investment in a business and ensure that if that business goes under, that the only thing they lose is their investment in that business. A local government corporation is designed to do precisely the same thing. So, we would, we would conduct, we would do this entire project through a local government corporation. What that means is that if things go south, and I'm not saying they will, I even hesitate to say it, but if things go south, the only thing that would be at stake would be whatever the local government corporation had. No property taxes would be at stake, no, no property of the city would be at stake. It would be isolated to everything that the local government corporation was doing, which at this point is nothing. And once the, once this development comes online, that would be the extent of its business. Yeah. And by the way, the bigger issue is going to be the private investors who will have a much larger stake in the matter. Obviously, they're, they're going to want to do what they can to ensure that it succeeds. So, but from the city's perspective, that was a big question that we asked and that was something we thought a lot about and that was, we feel pretty comfortable after discussing it at length, that that is going to be a way that we can ensure that it does not reverberate any further than that development. So, hopefully that. I realize for some, that may not be, may not be completely a satisfactory answer, but I am more than happy to answer any additional questions that anyone has about that, how that works, any what-ifs you may have, just to try to assure you that this is something that we feel is going to be, you know, that we've, we've put in place protections to ensure that it will not affect any other finances. So, yes, sir.
Well, you covered some of it. My name's Brian McCauley. My concern is always for the taxpayers and what obligations they have. Now, I will say that, you know, if this does happen, I hope the company that runs it makes a ton, ton of money, great, whatever, that's great. But with the reward also comes the risk. And, you know, my concern is that, you know, I don't want the risk to be socialized in the sense of the city, where the reward goes to the private entity. And so, with that, you know, kind of explaining maybe a little more about this LGC?
Yeah, Local Government Corporation.
LGC. Who is in charge of that? Who has leadership or voting roles in that organization? And let's say, you know, worst-case scenario, I'm always a worst-case scenario guy, the project goes kaput, what happens to that LGC and any kind of outlays or obligations that the city has? I will say, I do like the idea of, in this case, you know, funding it, so to speak, with, you know, the tax rebates in that sense, because the city's not having to outlay money.
Bingo.
So, I would say that, all things being equal, that is better. But is there any other outlays that the city would be on the hook for?
No. So, the, I'm glad you bring that up because that was precisely our goal, was we wanted to ensure that, that this was something where, you know, the more, you know, the incentives that come with it to the developer run with the success of the development. And we wanted to ensure that it was something where, you know, if, you know, obviously, I think it's going to do well, but if, let's say this thing never launches, what are we out money-wise? That's it. I mean, the study that we did, but will we have any other outlays that we're making in terms of incentives or anything else without seeing some success? No. The success is tied entirely to sales tax. So, that means no revenues, no incentives, you know, but that also means that the developer has tremendous incentive there to, for the development to do well, for it to generate sales tax. So, we're splitting the sales tax right down the middle. That, of course, does not include the fire or police funds. Those come 100% to the city. The property tax remains with the city. And, you know, the local government corporation, just like an LLC. If, if something doesn't work out, the only recourse is to the assets of the LLC. So, just, just that operation, that's it. So, it wouldn't, wouldn't touch anything else. So, that would, keep in mind, all we have right now is a letter of intent, but since we're selling the land, presumably, that's going to be up to the owner of the land. So, we would get, we would get our compensation for the sale of the land right at the front. So, you know, I guess that just depends on how it goes from there. We would still have our zoning laws in place, so they couldn't just do what they wanted with it. But, yeah, so. Judy?
I think this has been addressed before, but I'm just going to say it again. It's a comment and then maybe a question. After what happened with our original developer, with the TERS 2, are we very confident that we've done our due diligence, our extra diligence on bringing in a new partner?
Yes.
Second question is a copy of Austin's PowerPoint. Is that available on the website?
It'll be available on the website tomorrow morning.
Thank you. And the other question has to do with the development. Would it include any multifamily residential?
Currently, yes. That is the plan.
So, there would be apartments in addition to the stadium and city hall?
Yeah, high-end apartments.
High-end, okay. And then the very last question is, when you and I had an email dialogue, somebody had mentioned voting and allowing the citizens to vote, but it impacts our city charter. And I just need clarification. You had mentioned, please forgive me if I misunderstood, a citizens committee to decide making changes to the city charter.
So.
So, we could potentially vote as citizens.
Yeah, let me give a little bit of context, because obviously, no one else, except for you and I, saw the email, I guess, unless you showed it to someone else. For everyone else here, the question was, and this goes back to the question of, why don't citizens get a vote? And as I mentioned before, there are two things that primarily limit that. There's state law, so obviously, state law creates a couple of situations where citizens can vote on certain questions. And then there's our charter. So, if you ever hear of another city that voted on such-and-such project, and if we can't do that here, that's going to be because of a difference in our charter. And our charter, as written, limits, it says that special elections can only occur under circumstances allowed by state law, and then it defines, you know, or allowed by the charter. And some of those instances would include amendments to the charter, or it would include a special election if we had too many vacancies on council, which would trigger an election. It also, and then, of course, state law has a number of different requirements for elections, such as when we wanted to make a change to how our sales tax was used a couple of years ago, we had to have an election regarding the creation of the fire control district. So, unless one of those situations exists, we can't have an election. No matter how much city council wanted to have an election, we couldn't have one. What we could do is we could have a change made to the charter. The, what Judy is referring to is in my email, I mentioned, she asked whether or not the charter is reviewed on a regular basis. And it is. Every four years, it's reviewed by a committee of citizens. We just had a charter review committee formed just two years ago. Ashley Brown was one of the members of those committee. I think we had a couple, I think, prior to being elected on council this time around. I think Sherri Shepherd was on that committee as well, along with a number of other people. We actually, as part of that review process, they meet amongst themselves to look at things. They hold public hearings. They also hold a hearing with city council to get our feedback regarding the operation of government. And so, you know, we've got, I guess, another one coming up in another two years, it's over four years, if I remember correctly. So, that is something that gets looked at every so often. So, yeah. So, in fact, I think Rick was on the, were you on the original committee that drafted the charter?
I was on the original in 1986.
So, he's to blame if you don't like how it looks. So, yeah, this was a question that was raised during, so, so don't, you know, to make sure that this is clear, that this was a question that was raised during that committee's meetings. And it was, you know, obviously, it wasn't unanimous, but it was decided not to go in that direction. So, you know, that, just so you know, it is something that gets looked at and it's a question that gets asked. And, you know, I am more than happy to sit with a cup of coffee or a glass of beer, if that's your preference, to wax philosophical on how that would look and the challenges that might exist with it. But we obviously have to deal with the rules as we have them today, don't we? So, Nancy, go ahead.
My question was exactly what Judy brought up, the multifamily development. How many apartments are we looking at?
We haven't gotten into that detail yet.
Okay, so there's not a set number?
Not yet.
And my second part is somewhat along the lines, we've talked about traffic and things like that. I grew up one and a half miles from Delmar Stadium, probably across about 12 lanes of freeway traffic with 610 and 290. And I can tell you that you can hear every play, every announcer, the band play, the crowd cheer, you can hear it all. And I, it's not really anything you can do to put up a wall or to stop it or anything like that, but have we really thought about the change it will make in our backyard, our front yard, our houses with that going on?
Sure. So, I mean, if you can hear it over the noise of 290 as it exists today, you've got better ears than I do. I mean, we, so.
Do you hear over 290 and 16?
Well, so, so the, well, I'm referring to here as it exists here, but, you know, obviously, noise has been a concern. You know, this is something that's been dealt with by multiple city councils over time. You know, credit to Mark Malloy for the, for the surface that exists on the Beltway to keep the noise on that a lot quieter. We recently just had an extension of the sound wall facing between some of these houses over here and 290. Obviously, there's only so much you can do because, you know, as you get further back from the wall, obviously, you know, the whole logistics of the way sound travels just is going to cause it to travel. But, you know, we, but, but, but the point being, I think, I mean, honestly, you know, the sound from the traffic on the freeway probably is, would be a much greater concern than the occasional noise from a stadium. There are people who live right next to much larger sports stadiums and those properties don't seem to suffer in terms of their property value from the location. So, if noise were a significant issue for people living right next to stadiums, then I think that probably having, you know, one of the wider freeways in the state located between you and the stadium will probably, you know, mitigate that to a certain degree. Also, keep in mind, it's not going to be right on the freeway. I think it's a little bit further back on the, in the property overall. There will be a little bit of space between the stadium and the freeway, so hopefully that'll help as well. But, again, that is something that can always be, you know, if there need to be additional mitigating structures put in to try to help resolve that, that's something that could be done. But you're also, again, talking about 4,500 people. We're not talking about Delmar Stadium. So, I think it'll be a big difference. So.
Is the stadium like smaller? Is it a little smaller?
Yeah, I was going to say, I think that stadium is about the same size. It's a really interesting point. I didn't really.
It is a question of, if you can hear, you can hear.
It's.
How much of the actual word?
I wonder how much of that had to do with some stadium design because I've, I've been very close to the Berry Center and not, not noticed noise.
Yeah.
There's some other stadiums I can think of, but that, it's an interesting problem.
I mean, that is a good point because Delmar's pretty open, if I remember correctly. There's not, there's not much, it's like, it might as well just be stands, right? So, I think that makes a big difference as well.
It's 12,000 people is the seating capacity of Delmar Stadium.
12,000? That's what I thought. Okay. I was about to say, unless we're thinking, I was thinking the wrong place, but yeah, 12,000 people, so it is a big difference. So, Jim, go right ahead.
Thank you again, Mayor, for your time and everybody here. First one is, I'd emailed all the city councilman people here and I'm responding back to Councilman Singleton because I asked a question about the KHR project they had on their website that they had to pull down because he told me to ask him, so I'm going to follow up on what he said. Can you please explain why you had a website up? They had a project in Conroe that was not affiliated, we had an attorney.
Because we, because the land was sold.
Okay. All right.
So, just so everyone can hear, sorry, they probably can't hear you. He said, he's, so, so the, Chris Kay from KHR responded because the land was sold.
Okay. Well, great. Thank you for the answer. Another one, what is the actual impetus about building a stadium? Is it extra money? Why do we actually need it? If we didn't do anything, would our property taxes go up or down? Thank you, Mayor.
Well, thanks, Jim. If I had a crystal ball to tell you whether your property taxes would go up and down any given year or whether we built a stadium or not, I would, that'd be quite the skill. That I don't know. What is the impetus for building the stadium? Well, keep in mind, it's not like we set out when all of this started, as we showed in the presentation. It wasn't like we said, we should build a stadium. Instead, the impetus is that we have a very limited ability to affect development around us. I mean, I think, you know, there are many people here who have, and I know because they've told me, that have lived in Jersey Village at a time where they tell me stories about rice paddies existing just outside of the city, where there was nothing else. You know, the city came out of a cow pasture. Well, when they built that, it's not like the surrounding pastures went away. It was, it was a city, a small city in the middle of nowhere. Obviously, it's a lot different now, right? We are not in the nice serene environment that we used to be in. And as you all know, things that happen outside of the city of Jersey Village can have some significant impacts inside the city of Jersey Village. And so our ability to affect development in a positive way can play a very key role in being able to turn the tide in a positive direction for the area around us. If we continue to allow industrial development to occur south of US 290, what do you suppose are the chances that some of the areas around us that are not so desirable are suddenly going to become very desirable? Not much, right? Pretty slim. If, however, if we can take what limited undeveloped or underdeveloped area that we have at our disposal, south of 290, if we can spark development in the area that we have available now, if we can then turn that towards being able to generate further interest, as we've already heard, there are property owners that have said, "Well, I could build this light industrial thing, but if you're going to build what it sounds like you're gonna build, I'm gonna wait and build something better." If we can harness that, and if we can begin to turn the tide towards better development, towards higher development, towards something that better fits with our city, then I think we begin to really change the nature of all of the development around us. And if that happens, a lot of different things that we are now concerned with will improve, I believe. If you're concerned about crime in the surrounding areas and how it affects Jersey Village, then you should be looking at this as a tool to potentially help us change that. If you think that you pay too much in property taxes, because we have a very limited tax base from which to be able to generate sales tax to use instead of property tax, although we've done pretty good over the last couple of years changing that as well, if you'd like to see that changed, so that we're able to utilize more sales tax and not keep asking citizens to pay more in property tax, then you should want to see something like this happen as well. This all ties together. And I realize that there's a lot of what-ifs connected, but that's how these things happen. We didn't wind up where we are because of one decision. We happened because of a chain of decisions that have happened over decades. And the only way that we get to a point where we change it for the better is if we start making a series of decisions today that affect our future in a positive way, that will eventually get us to where we see a community around us that we want to see, not the one that maybe we fear is coming otherwise. So...
So Bobby, I'll just comment on the fact that we have the comprehensive plan that was developed with community input. And the community wishes to have more entertainment, higher-end development, something that the community can utilize. Unfortunately, that piece of property on the other side presents a challenge because of the railroad. And it really is a barrier to the type of development that we all had hoped to have over there. So because of how it's laid out and because of the railroad, you're never gonna have an HEB that's going to want to come and develop that property. And we've, a number of us have had conversations with other real estate companies and other developers, and we've all heard the same thing, that that piece of property is really meant for industrial type of development. So this is very much a way, because railroad is not gonna impact a stadium. You can see the railroad goes through, you know, Minute Maid Park. You can see the railroad goes through Olson Field and College Station. This is a great way to, you know, spark that development and change the characteristic of that piece of property over there. And as Austin mentioned, with that change can come redevelopment and hopefully see some of that industrial go away and become something else, whether it's retail, whether it's multifamily, whether it's single family. So that really was the impetus of this development and the stadium.
Mayor, if I can add one point. If all of that square footage of land over there were to go to industrial, like Prologis or like Arctic over on 1960 and 290, using that same valuation of land in those industrial buildings, the city would see roughly $358,000 in property tax revenue every year, compared to the 1.3 million in property tax revenue that we would see with the development that's projected.
Thank you. So to answer Jim's questions, your taxes would go up? You can, if you wanna, I want to make sure, again, I want to make sure people have, I... Jim, listen, be respectful of everyone else here. If you have a question, please get in line. They've all been waiting for quite some time, so...
I would...
Carolyn Schuster, and I just about got out of line, because Nancy did cover my main question. It was about noise abatement plan to protect our homes. I think a stadium will generate a lot of noise. I like the point of trying to keep trees as a buffer, but I have seen in areas where I feel like there were trees that maybe were not protected when some of our other developments were done down Jones Road. So that's a concern we just wanted to kind of point out. And I guess I'm still having a hard time grasping why various businesses and entertainment and restaurants are afraid to come by an area that is bordered by a railroad, but a stadium is not. I think there's a lot of people that want to see high-end development there. They're not opposed to that. They're still questioning the success and if the stadium is really the answer.
Sure. So this is actually a conversation we've had quite a bit, and not just about a stadium, but about a lot of other things. There are certain things that generate their own foot traffic, like you could build them just about anywhere, within reason, and they're going to draw people there. There are other things, particularly retail outlets, where there may be dozens of that same type of outlet, and people are, you know, people are a lot like water. They're gonna choose the path of least resistance. They're gonna go to the easiest location. So what you typically need in an area where maybe it doesn't have any natural draw to it otherwise, you need at least one or more draws of places that people are going to go, almost regardless of where it is. I don't know how many people remember what, well, I think a perfect example would be when the Astrodome opened. What was around the Astrodome when it opened? Almost nothing, right? Wisefields. But people went, right? Tens of thousands of people, high tens of thousands of people, and why did they go? Now, because they wanted to see baseball. Now, would those same people have gone to, we'll use another timely reference of that time, would, if they had built a Foley's there, do you think thousands of people would have gone to the Foley's in that location? Maybe a few, but most people probably would have just gone to Foley's downtown when there was one, or another location. There are unique features about certain outlets, such as a stadium, that will draw people in. And once you have that foot traffic, regardless of the reason, then all of the surrounding areas will fill in with other businesses that want to draw on that foot traffic. And that's exactly what developers, when they're building this sort of development, if they can find a piece of land that maybe has been underdeveloped because it doesn't have a draw, if they can get a draw in there, that helps to make things happen. Now, it could be that 30 years from now, we'll all laugh about how that was just a vacant piece of land that everyone argued that no one would ever go over there. If it all builds out, and then it's not a problem, but you have to start somewhere, and that's sort of the goal there, is to create that first draw that'll get people in there and let that start to take hold. So I hope that covers it. But I agree, Marilyn, all of the other things you were talking about regarding, you know, again, we don't want to make things noisier than they are. We obviously want to make sure that they are, you know, we want to mitigate that as much as possible to the degree it exists. We also want to make sure that we save as many trees as we can. We want that to be a beautiful area. Yeah, Chris, if you wanna, if you wanna just make a comment at the microphone?
I want to make sure, I never mislead you in any way, because this is a long road. This is a long road.
Can you just, don't even face the audience, Chris.
I want to make sure I don't mislead anyone about the trees. So the trees as a buffer around the property, we're gonna try to do everything we possibly can to save them. In the retention area, we'll do everything we possibly can to save them. To be determined on, along the rail line, because that might be needed for visibility for the retail. But as far as where the baseball field and all those buildings are going, that has to be cleared. So you can't have trees in a baseball field.
Yeah. I think, to be clear, yeah, obviously, there are, like I said earlier, there are gonna have to be some clearing, because you're gonna have to have parking, you have to have buildings. But I think, obviously, as Chris, as you mentioned earlier, you know, there's an effort to try to retain where you can the trees that are, yeah. Yeah. So hopefully that helps. Mark, go right ahead.
Mark Malloy, and my next question is that the city plans on building a new city hall over on the other side of 290. And the estimated cost of the city hall at this point is $11.5 million. And before the election that we just had this last May in 2022, the city council had discussions about doing a bond referendum in the amount of $20 million at first, and then they lowered that to $10 million.
We're referring to the golf course?
Yeah, the $10 million was gonna be to fund the new golf course clubhouse and events center. But then the council decided to not do a bond referendum, and the council has the money to actually do the golf course clubhouse and events center, and they also have the money to do the city hall. And so, you know, there's been discussions about the city charter and about that the city government does not have, they're not able to ask the citizens if they want a specific project built, if the citizens are not asked to endet themselves through a bond referendum. And so the question is, is that it's been asked in the past, is why has the city accumulated the money to be able to do these projects, knowing that if they had the money to do the project...
Mark, I hate to interrupt, but I remember the 92nd rule. We need to really get back to the...
If they took and they had the money and did not have to ask the citizens through a bond referendum, basically what happens is the government, they sit there and they go, "Okay, we don't really want the citizens' input through a vote, so we'll accumulate the money to be able to not allow them to vote to make a decision on if they want a project done because of the way the city charter is written."
Okay.
That's what I have to say about that. Thank you.
Okay. So, so first of all, I'm not sure, except for the fact that it happens to mention city hall, I'm not really sure what it has to do with this. But I will say this, I think what I'm hearing is there seems to be a disincentive, I suppose, to pay as you go. Because, I mean, to be honest, when people are asked to vote on these things, it's to vote on debt. And so voting means that we are asking you for permission to take on debt that the city may or may not be able to repay in the future. Obviously, most do, but we've seen situations where cities have gotten themselves in a heck of a lot of trouble taking on too much debt. It's the reason why the state wants you to vote on it. The state is not, the law doesn't exist so that the state says that citizens can vote on projects. If they did, they would have made that the law, but instead, people vote on debt because of the dangers that governments can get in when they take on debt irresponsibly. The reason why the government here has focused on paying for projects as we go is for that reason. Because we want to ensure that the city has the flexibility where if the economy goes badly, or if anything happens that somehow affects the city's ability to be able to pay for things, we will not already be on the hook for things we already built and now can't pay for. Instead, we then have the flexibility to stop and delay and not build something. And when we do that, rather than worrying about how we paid, how we pay for the debt we've incurred, we instead have the flexibility of having the surplus that would have been dedicated to that project, that could be redirected if need be, or we can wait. And so I think that is fiscally responsible government. It is something, the pay-as-you-go system is something that is held out by fiscal conservatives throughout the country, I mean, even throughout the world, as a gold standard. I think it's something we ought to encourage, not discourage. But if people want to vote on projects, there's a mechanism to change your form of government so that you can do that. But that is not what we have now. So, you know, I'm sorry if, I know that there are people who disagree with that, and that's okay. We can have that discussion. But we have to distinguish between the state policy that exists and the reason for it versus the desire to vote on projects because we disagree with the project, not with the debt. That's a different discussion. Sorry, Mark, go right ahead.
Mark Taylor, and I applaud the overall goal of trying to change this property, to change our direction. And I thought that was a very useful discussion on the challenges. My fear is that there may be a bit of pounding a square into a round hole, and that we're force-fitting it. The studies suggest that the majority of people are not in favor of the stadium. And I say that because of the line in the study, it goes, "Only 37% of the Jersey Village residents surveyed indicated that they felt that JV could support a ball club and a stadium." And I was curious as to where or who did the stadium idea resonate originally? And what role, if the majority of the citizens are not in favor of the stadium, what role does that play in the city council's decision-making? I just don't know how that...
Sure. So...
I'll have a second one.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
The second question is, I noticed in the first project team, the developer had pledged $145 million. And on the current one, I did not see a similar pledge, and I was just curious as to why the difference.
You mean, you didn't see the number, or you saw a different figure?
No, in the study, it referenced the $145 million with your first developer. And in the discussion of the current, there was no discussion of a similar number being pledged.
So keep in mind that if you're referring to the study, that not containing it, keep in mind, the study was only on the question of the feasibility of the stadium. It was not studying the entire development. So that may be why. Are you referring to why you haven't seen, like, in the presentation, the number? I mean, we do have that number. I'm just trying to remember whether it was in the presentation?
I just didn't see any number referenced in the study, where it referenced $145 in the first, that maybe they just didn't mention it.
It wouldn't be in the study, because it's, the study was only focused on the stadium, not on the entire development.
Okay, but the study referenced the $145 million pledged for the first developer.
Which study? You're talking, are we talking about the stadium?
The CSL study.
This...
It referenced specifically the $145 million.
I believe that number is what they, the developer thought at that point is what they would put into the project?
I mean, that may have been just some context, but I, that would have also been super early on. It would have been too early to put a figure on that. I mean, even now, I don't think it would be exact as to what the figure was.
So Mark is correct. Page five, the CSL study does talk about Collaborate, bringing money. If you don't, do you mind if I talk for a second about that Collaborate and...
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. There's a lot of discussions about why and Collaborate, this $145. Unfortunately, Collaborate said a lot of things. And Councilwoman Shepherd alluded to, we've talked to other people about this. And I was pretty skeptical about the Collaborate deal to begin with, and went and talked with real estate developers and brokers and some big firms in Houston, and then some family friends. And everyone that has looked at this project, and also not Collaborate, but this KHJR project and the stadium, everyone has brought up the fact that there's no homes over there. So everybody would love to see this HEB high-end development happen over there. And there just isn't support for it. Everyone in this room is probably not happy to find out that there's apartments in this plan. We all get that. Nobody's excited to have apartments. They need to be there. And this plan is our best shot at putting some action over there, because that provides the demographic, it provides the homes and the rooftops for much further development beyond these 33 acres. And then you have the question, you talked about cost and who wants to put money towards this. Chris at KHJR is putting millions up. And you talked about the survey where residents said whether or not they were interested. And one of the interesting things about that survey is they have no clue if you're Jersey Village resident or not because of the way they did the survey.
You can also submit it multiple, multiple, multiple times, which I have no doubt you probably did that. So I wouldn't, I question the value of that part of the study. I would ignore it. I would ignore it.
That, there was a lot of questions with that. For me, I mean, for your average tax person, you're looking at three, five hundred dollars, maybe. I mean, there's, there's some stake in the game as far as your property taxes. They stand to invest and lose or gain millions, and they're not going to make that with, that decision without lots of data behind that. And they're not counting on us to back them. That's why this is in the LGC, which I'm not sure if that was addressed earlier. The LGC, we are the LGC. And we're not backing that. They're backing that, the owners, team ownership is backing that. And those people aren't going to come to the table unless they believe it's a good idea for their money. And we're not building until they sign.
I appreciate that. Then if you could just address the, where or who did it originate with? And if, what role, if the majority is against the stadium?
We don't know that.
I know, but I'm asking if you do. I mean, there's, there's two ways to approach it. If this study doesn't reference that accurately, is do some sort of survey? Or it's a city council, that's not important where the residents are because maybe they don't have the right information. I would just like to know, does the refer, does the majority of the residents view count, and if so, how in decision making?
I mean, so, half of this council is going to be on the ballot in May. Half this council is going to be on the ballot in the next May, and so on and so forth, as it has been. So, yes, citizen opinion matters. We don't get voted on out of thin air. So, it, the key here is going to be, the reason why we are having this town hall is because citizen opinion matters. We want to make sure citizens are able to get their questions answered. Do I want a citizen to formulate their opinion solely upon what they saw on a rambling on Nextdoor? And then judge the quality of this development based on that? No. But I want to give as much opportunity for citizens to receive all of the information that they want about this. I want to get input back from citizens. And at the end of the day, yes, we are making the decision based on all of those factors, including the feedback we get from citizens, as we have been the whole time. But we want to make sure that it is informed feedback, and we want to make sure that it's accurate feedback. We don't, we want to make sure that it's not someone sitting on their PC for hours, plugging in a hundred responses to a survey, and then saying that that's, you know, the will of the people. Just like on Nextdoor, when someone's dog voted in a poll once, and people like to hold out polls on Nextdoor being some, some gauge of the will of the people, when it's not.
And I appreciate that.
Yeah, so, so I hope that, I mean, obviously, this is part of the process, is trying to gauge people's feedback.
Mark, can I speak on that for a second? I didn't fill out the survey a hundred times or, you know, a dog. But I was one of those people when I first heard about the stadium who said, oof, I don't think so. I don't think so. I didn't know that I could be convinced of it. And then I sat down and learned the data because I had this one idea of what the stadium would be. And then, of course, I know, and I'm sure y'all all get tired of hearing that, that we have a lot of conversations out there that I know that I wish we could just tell everybody everything we know, but for legal things and red tape, we have to do it piecemeal by piecemeal and how it goes, and which is why we're doing this today. So, as soon as we were able to tell more things, we were like, let's do it. Trust me that we, I have been won over after reviewing everything and reading the data. And, and yes, the survey was very subjective because I didn't even like the question, do I think Jersey Village can support it? No, the eight thousand of us, probably not. But it's the thirty miles around there. Do I think there's a Mr. and Ms. Copperfield that would go to that? Maybe so. Or Mr. and Ms. Jersey Village? Maybe there's like, you know, so many of us. So, it's such a more entangled, complicated question that I don't think, I don't think it was bad to say that maybe just all of Jersey Village, you know, can't support it. No, but I don't even know if I'm rambling now. But I do want you to say that I was, I was that person. I'm, you know, I'm not a crazy person. I was on that same fence with, with some of you, and that's why we're giving this presentation today to try to educate and answer questions and hopefully at least open, you know, the door to some possibility of you hearing why it's a good deal.
And I appreciate that. I really appreciate the town hall. I think they're very valuable. But, but I think it's important for us to hear what you say and not have preconceived ideas. On the other hand, you guys are so, you want it so bad, and it is a very lofty goal.
I think, okay-
That's not true.
We don't ignore critical thinking.
That's absolutely not factual at all.
So, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Folks, let's be respectful of one another. Let everyone, when everyone talks, no one can hear anyone. The, to be clear, first of all, we've been through this process now for months, for months at this point. So, I don't want you to confuse, I mean, now I'm kind of like, if there had been a camera inside our executive session to see the mess, you are seeing the end result after months of process that was not pretty. I can't divulge conversations. Trust me, if you're standing up there saying, well, you're convinced and you are, you've been one hundred percent the whole way, no, no, not even close. But the difference is, you're at a point I was at probably six, nine months ago. And there's been a lot of research, a lot of reading, a lot of discussion, a lot of back and forth, a lot of negotiating, and here we are. So, don't, don't confuse this as if we're in the same spot and I just jump right in and go, yeah, let's do it. No. I think that it's, is there a risk? Yes. Are there details that still have to be ironed out? Yes. But do I think it's worth it? Yes.
Appreciate your time.
Yeah.
I, I don't think we're anywhere close to a sure thing. I understand the, I can definitely understand how you would think decisions have been made. If we voted on this right now, I'm not sure it would pass. And that's why this town hall is happening. That's why the other one's happening. That's why people are looking for input. I, I'm still interested in getting more feedback, and I'm gonna let y'all talk, but it's not sure at all.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. I stood there for a while and let people talk, so I'm just gonna say them.
Sure, thank, I apologize for the wait. We're trying to move through to get as many people in as possible.
So, I understand why you can't vote. But why can't you do something James and I have talked about before? Is you get a hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollar bond, put it on there, that'd be very little debt to us, to let us vote so you could get a clear, this is what Jersey Village feels like? Why couldn't you do that? We talked about that after Michelle and I's election. So, that's my first one. My second one, please correct me if I'm wrong, but all the tax generated over there stays over there. So, why should I want that when that's not going to help me living here? It's just going to raise my property value, which will raise my tax to you.
Because not all of it stays there. Not, the only-
I get, he gets a hundred and sixty, he gets a hundred and sixty, we get a hundred and sixty. I don't care about a hundred and sixty. There's two, how much over there that we're not going to get? So, why should I want to support that when all my property tax is going to do is go up because my value's going to go up?
Nope.
No, that's-
I didn't tell them to do-
It's not just the one sixty.
Okay, then tell them where I'm wrong.
The only thing that has to stay over there is the property tax and the TERS. All of the sales tax goes to the general fund, the crime control-
Well, all those millions go to the bottom line for us.
Yes, yes, all of the sales tax.
And you then will take that and take our property taxes down.
We have been. Your property tax bill, the average property tax bill today is lower than it was five years ago.
Okay, so, so-
We had that discussion, Nancy. Your numbers are a little off.
Guys, it's still my question.
I apologize.
So, so what I mean is, you will reduce the percentage? Because I get, I get where your math is. I understand, I'm not, I get it. But it's still point seven four. Are you going to reduce it to, to the no new tax rate?
Hey, folks, I apologize. And I'm sorry, Ashley. Folks, again, I understand that everyone's having their side conversations, and one or two is fine. But the problem is, it has an effect where it starts to just flood out everything that's happening over here. So, I get what you're saying. At the end of the day, your concern is not the percentage or the value of your property or the exemptions. Your concern is the bill at the end of the day, right?
The bill at the end, yes.
And that is what we're focused on. When we, there's all, there's so many levers we can pull with exemptions, percentage. Obviously, we can't do much about the valuation, but if the valuation goes up, obviously, we're going to bring the rate down. I mean, we started off with the exemptions because it benefited homeowners first and foremost. If we mess with the rate, then not only homeowners, but also the businesses around here are the ones that see that. So, we wanted to start with the exemptions and then go to the tax.
My final question, and I'm not going to back in line, is, have you done an environmental study over there recently? And what were the results?
We have not done it recently, but there's been no one over there to do anything environmentally.
But what were the last results then?
It was clean.
There were no problems?
There was the tier one finding, the level one environmental study found no issues.
Okay.
Yeah.
Those studies are available on our website.
What was that?
Those studies are available on the website.
Yeah, and the studies are available on the city website. But yeah, since, since nothing has happened over there, we did that back in twenty-
Eighteen.
Eighteen or nineteen?
Eighteen.
So, I mean, nothing's been over there since then. It's been raw land, so. Sorry, Scott, go ahead.
Yeah, my name's Scott Schubing, and thanks for, thanks for hosting this event. A comment, a couple of comments and then a question here at the end. First off, thanks for, you know, addressing the citizens, you know, wants to have more entertainment and eating options. And this is, you know, one of the ways we can, we can get there. So, like, like to see that. And, you know, citizens, we voted y'all in here to do, to do exactly that, and that's what you're doing, to do what the citizens have asked for. And I was at the holiday celebration, you know, just the other day, and looked at the citizens out there, and there's a whole lot of, you know, younger crowds out there. So, a lot of young families, and those are the citizens. Those are the people who are putting, you know, putting y'all up here. So, that's what they want. That's what we want. We want to have, you know, this kind of options out there. I did like, Ashley mentioned there is having a small bond. That's, you know, if you want to put it to a vote, put it to a vote. We've seen what the citizens have voted for so far. We can do another vote, that's what you need. Kind of show what the citizens want. It's something to do also, right? We have to have more detail to be able to make that vote. But the question is, so as far as that thirty-three acres, like, how much of that's being developed? Is all, I heard a master plan? Is it a whole thing being developed right off the bat? Or is it a phased approach, or what's the approach there?
So, I don't think we've got quite into the details of the, that. I mean, right now, it's just we've got a site plan. We've kind of got the incentives laid out. I don't think we've quite gotten into the timeline per se. I don't know, Chris, if you've got anything you want to add regarding that.
So, of the thirty-some-odd acres, a portion of it is in reserve for wetlands and retention. So, only about thirty-two roughly, if we're lucky, will be developable. Of that, the stadium obviously is going to take a huge portion of that and in city hall. And then the, probably while those are underway, we have to build the multifamily. This is, this is not rural multifamily. This is urban multifamily, high density, mid-rise, you know, higher-end multifamily. And that's really what creates the demand. Once that goes up and the stadium is up, then the retail and entertainment happens. So, that's how.
Yes, sir.
My question is, have we approached anybody like Tillman or Mattress Mac or anybody that would love, if it's such a good idea and it's profitable and all that, why wouldn't they love to have their name on that? You know, I mean, I don't understand why we're going to take the risk when Tillman can come in there and build restaurants, build a stadium, Mattress Mac can do the same thing. So, have we approached anybody of that caliber to find out if they can do that?
So, you're talking about specifically naming rights for the stadium?
Yeah, well, you're going to eventually get that once it's built, I know. But if they were approached to build it, has anybody approached any of it? If it's such a wonderful idea, I'm just wanting to know why they haven't got on the bandwagon.
Well, typically, I'm, I don't think, I don't think Tillman Fertitta or Mattress Mac have ever built, I don't know if West Side Club counts.
Mattress Mac built a horse track, so he's been involved in a lot.
The, so, so to give you a little bit of context, and this is something I've learned along the way. Typically, what will happen is when, when a team ownership group comes in and they're involved in the process, usually, they work hand in hand on those details. So, it would, unless, unless it was a Tillman Fertitta or a Mattress Mac owning the team, then they wouldn't, it wouldn't be either one of them building the stadium. I can't get into who we're talking to. I just, even if it were one of those, I couldn't confirm that either way. The only thing I can say is, once it's announced, I think that'll assuage your concerns. If that's the level you're thinking, I think you'll be all right.
Sir, sir, just want to make sure, because I don't know if Bobby answered, answered the question. You're asking, why is a city effectively driving development as opposed to somebody seeing the blank land and saying, I want to build right there? There's a lot of, I, I don't have an answer to what other developers are thinking other than talking to people like, like James has done. My number one thing is sometimes you do have to, cities do have to spur in things. When a developer sees what's there, and they look for easy shopping centers, parking lots, the tracks get in the way, and that's what we've talked about. High, high-frequency retail won't work there initially. Multi-use, which is, development takes special people who have done these things before, and they're not always out there. And they're, they may be willing to work, but they're not today, right? It might be five years from now. Their capital's invested elsewhere. And this is the same thing we found with the land won't work to collaborate three years ago.
Yeah, if you're, if you're asking, have we approached someone that would just buy the land and build something of similar quality on the land? We have talked to dozens of people at this point. But there are just some situations where, I mean, incentives exist for a reason because sometimes there are situations where, yeah, maybe eventually it would get developed into something that nice. But more than likely, if we just let it go to whatever purpose somebody wanted to build it, you would see warehouses and parking lots.
But in the twenty years that this has been going on, before the road was cut through and everything else, is that we've had these field of dreams. We've had all kinds of different dreams. Going to be a transit center, we're going to have high-end restaurants. And all this stuff has been going on for years, and nothing has materialized.
Sure.
And people have been approached, and a lot of contractors. And I got a developer that lives near me, and I asked him what he thought about that piece of property over there and what could happen. And he said, to my knowledge, Warren Buffett couldn't develop that. So, you know, we're, and then as long as we've been messing with it, you know, what's going on, you know?
Well, yeah, I get it.
Now, we've gone from one thing to another, now we're going to have a ball field.
And you're right, Warren Buffett couldn't develop it. He doesn't tend to develop. He tends to buy it after it's already been developed or it's not doing as well. But I get it. I mean, I'm sure a hundred years ago, you looked at this land here, and if somebody said, you know what, I'm going to build a, I'm going to build a suburban town right here, they'd have looked at us like we were crazy. They probably looked at Clark Henry like he was crazy. Here we are.
You know, I talked to two major firms in Houston, and both of them were very, very interested in buying the property. Very quickly said they would be able to sell it and develop it, and both wanted to do projects similar to what the city manager talked to a minute ago. Real, not apart, truly apartments, not, not mid-rise urban development, truly what you see over across Jones Road. That is in extremely high demand in Houston, and it could be sold and done like that tomorrow. Absolutely, anybody could do that. My son could make that development profitable.
Um, the other option is Amazon, or other large warehouse, done tomorrow. Uh, many people are interested in buying that property from us. It's very interesting to see, because several years ago, I remember making fun of the TOD development, and getting really mad at the people that were on council, they've, they've left at even pursuing that as an option. Um, and now, it's a very interesting story, the more I've learned about real estate development. I understand that the TOD, that just isn't supported there, there's no way it could function, but I understand the whys, and as the city manager suggested, those people that are willing to buy that land today and develop it, the income that the city would see is in the three-hundred thousand a year in the tax range? We're not going to, that is not going to support us. We need to hire six more firemen. We need to invest more in our, uh, public utilities. Um, there's a lot of costs that the city could see, and so it is wiser to go with a development that is going to generate this kind of sales rev-, sales tax and property tax revenue of more than a million dollars a year.
Now, you're saying Amazon, which I think that's not a big enough piece of property for Amazon to develop, but...
They've developed in larger, in smaller spots, that is well enough.
You, you get the tax revenue off of their merchandise, right?
It's to the zip code they ship it at, and, and I wouldn't dwell too much on Amazon. Large warehouse space, um, I think it's class one, class A.
And then we went to Goodman, we had lost revenue because the computers were worth more than the air conditioners.
Yes, and when you deal with-
That's when money was coming at that time.
When you deal with warehouse space, you can tax inventory, you can tax, if they deliver the product on-site, so Goodman Manufacturing used to deliver the product here on-site in Jersey Village, and so we were able to capture sales tax, they did a, uh, Chapter 380 agreement there. But you're not going to see the income of this. If you did warehouse space over there, as the city manager, that number, prologis, was going to, a, a type, not prologis, but a type of warehouse, how much per year would we save?
Hans Western was the one that wanted that land over originally.
Three hundred and, three-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars a year.
Three-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars per year, and with this type of development, we're expecting what in, in sales of property tax revenue?
That's a projection, one-point-three million, but that's-
Yes, and projections, so projections can be anything, and I, I absolutely understand that. One of the reasons I have a lot of respect for the city manager is Chris's projections, they're fair. They are what he, he's trying to sell a product. His are conservative, he pulled a lot of revenue out of it, and it's still a good decision, and we can still make far more money than we would with warehouse or apartments.
I mean, thi- this all goes back to what I, my point earlier. We have a limited opportunity to affect development in this area in a positive manner. If we want to see this area continue to stagnate like it has, then we let warehouses be built over there. If we want to give our city a chance to see development and to see the area elevate closer to our city, with the quality that we think should be here, then this is the, precisely the sort of development, whether it's exactly this or something similar, this is why we've been pursuing this. Because if we just let it go to warehouses, that's it. You don't unring that bell, it's done. We got one shot at this.
So what is a major ta-, taxpayer in Jersey Village? Sams, is that the biggest?
I believe all that data is private, we can't release.
Well, no, there's, well, property, I'm trying to remember, there's some data.
Property tax, uh, the biggest, biggest property was listed in the annual audit, but I don't know what I'm paying.
Yeah, unfortunately, the state makes sales ta-, I mean, for good reason, because it ties back directly to revenue. They, they prohibit us from being able to disclose it.
Never underestimate Chick-fil-A and Whataburger.
Oh, no kidding?
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
I heard Mattress Mac won a big bet.
Yeah, can we tax bets made out of state? Uh, Andrew, how you doing?
Andrew Mitchum, uh, just want to make a, a comment, but I have a question too, but I think, um, you know, we wanted this to be a parking lot, we could have just not done anything. And I think it's unfair to sort of say in the study that, um, the majority of people are against a stadium, because we're not comparing it to what it could have been. It could have been warehouses, it was going to be a parking lot months, it would have been right now. I think everyone in this room would be outraged if this thirty acres was paved over in concrete, the headwaters of the E-127 channel, uh, was paved over, and then you learn the city had the opportunity to buy it and make it something better. I think everyone here would be outraged. I think what we're here to learn is what is on the table now, and I love what's on the, on there now. What I'd like to know is, um, reading the study, there were a lot of terms in it that were a little confusing. How is the team operated? There was a term in there that the operator of the team, uh, is that the owner? Are they the operator? How is that going? I know there's a couple, you know, the, uh, there's a couple ownership groups. Uh, Jim Crane owns the Astros, Nolan Ryan owns the Round Rock Express, that, those are the ownership groups. Uh, I know you can't reveal the name of the ownership group that's interested right now. When will we know that? When can that be announced? Uh, when are you anticipating that? And what's the role of the operator? Thank you.
Sure, so, um, we are hopeful that there, my understanding is there are discussions happening right about now, uh, and we're hopeful early next year to be able to reveal who, who the potential ownership group is. Uh, but, but the operator essentially is the owner of the, you know, the owner of the team, and then they are generally responsible for the operations of the stadium. And if I remember correctly, Austin, from your, from your presentation, they even, for non-team events, they also are the ones that basically operate the stadium for that purpose, right?
Right, yeah, we would lease, we would lease it to a team owner-operator who would lease that three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, run all the events and everything out of the stadium, they would, they would take on all of that, that risk.
Yeah, so the, the, a lot of these details are going to be part of the lease. I do know that a lot of these ownership groups typically have, like, all of their, like, they'll have, the concessions are their concession company, their management group is a management, you know, subsidiary of their parent company. They've got kind of the full package, and they do that because that ensures, like I was mentioning earlier, because minor league and similar levels of baseball tend to be more about the experience, they're very careful to make sure that they can control the quality of that entire experience. So, that's my understanding of kind of the role there. Uh, the city's role would be purely just kind of in the middle, I guess. We, we, we would not be, it's not like city staff would be over there, you know, maintaining the stadium or anything like that. Uh, it, it would be left to a group with far more experience than us, in that regard. Uh, yes, sir, go right ahead.
My name's Frank Sheehy, uh, I've lived in Jersey Village for a long time, I know most, a lot of people here. Uh, actually, I have been involved in land development, I've done, uh, real estate in the city of Houston for about thirty-five years. Actually, now, currently president of one of the largest water boards in Harris County, MUD 287. We have about two thousand taps, we actually have a Walmart and a Amazon facility there. So, I'm familiar with some of the things y'all have been talking about. And, uh, when I first saw the, uh, information, I laughed out loud, a baseball stadium? And I still am smirking. Uh, I can't believe that we're even considering this, folks. Uh, this is, just because the city made a bad decision and bought land that they probably shouldn't have, and now they're trying to backpedal and come up with a solution? When you own real estate, it's highest and best use. You can't waste a footprint, whether the property is usable now or not, then you just do nothing. And I know we're hurting for tax revenue and this, that, and the other thing, but I, I'm not, I just, I, this doesn't feel right. And the, the tone that I'm hearing tonight of this super-strong pitch that you're giving us, and not one person in this room, with some exceptions, is buying it. Look, I'm, and I know some of these people here, they're friends of mine, right? And I'm sure there are some dissenters, but this doesn't feel like the highest and best use. I don't, I don't, I don't appreciate the vigor with which this pitch is being made, okay? I also don't think y'all realize, there's a multitude of environmental issues. I'm sure you guys have talked with the TCEQ, they kind of have a big stick, and it's a, going to be a challenge to get some of the things you guys are talking about done with retention, this, that, and the other thing.
We have a phase-one study that's been completed and found zero issues.
Well, phase-one is not the same thing as getting TCEQ approval, we can debate that in another moment. I'll be hon-, and my other problem that I have, my other challenge that I have, y'all can't even build a clubhouse at a golf course, okay? And I've talked to people on this, on this, in this room about this before. It's laughable that you're pitching this idea to us. You can't even fix a road so I can drive from Jones Road to back where Joe and I live, to our house. Okay? So that's all I'm going to say. I will say this, if this goes through, I'm going to vehemently oppose anyone on this board that runs for reelection. That's all I have to say.
What's the highest and best use?
Maybe nothing, maybe nothing, maybe nothing. You know, sometimes in life, we have to be patient and let the Lord come to us. Building a ballpark, to me, is not the highest and best use. And I make, I've, I've developed land before, okay, I get it. Developer comes in, he sees an opportunity, he sees a willing audience, he's going to make his pitch, and I have no problem with that, these guys are in business, I get it. This might, this guy may be the best developer in the world, I don't know that. But it doesn't feel like this is the right place. Who wants to go sit in July, in the middle of July, at an outdoor baseball park with a bunch of nobodies to play baseball?
They did it in Sugar Land.
They did it in Sugar Land, this isn't Sugar Land. Last time I checked, this is called Jersey Village, okay? I want it to be a village, okay? I don't want to have to deal with traffic, I can't even make a left-hand turn at eight o'clock in the morning on Jones Road over here. Okay? So, I've said my piece.
So one thing I do want to correct, Frank, you said, uh, so the city can't build a club, golf course clubhouse, they want to build a stadium. I never said one thing about the city building a stadium. We're not building anything over there.
I'm just connecting the dots.
Okay, so, the point here being, we are here with a developer who wants to build a stadium. We're here with a developer who wants to build a multi-purpose, multi-use development. What they are asking for us to do is to work with them on incentives, and that's it. This, this is, this is something that you see in cities all throughout the country, and I'm not talking just about, for, for those politically inclined, I'm not just talking about those one by one particular political party versus another. I'm talking about the most conservative cities in the world all utilize this as a development tool, and they use it very successfully. Now, you're right, that land, if left to its own devices, would not produce this type of development. We know that, why? Because it hasn't so far. Would it? Maybe if it went undeveloped for another fifty years, maybe it would. We don't, you know, fifty years ago, if you looked at Jersey Village and the surrounding area, it looked quite a bit different than it does now.
You're just repeating yourself, I'm, I'm honestly, you're just repeating yourself. You know, you know-
Okay, but, but the point being, there's a lot of people who have repeated themselves tonight, but I think it's worth repeating because it responds to that point. Now, there may be just a difference of philosophy amongst some, and I get it, I understand that. There are some who don't like incentives whatsoever, regardless of the situation, regardless of the, the use, a- and I get that, and that, that's perfectly fine. When we're making decisions for the city, we have to look not just at philosophical considerations, we have to look at the facts, we have to look at what happens in the coming decades, if we do this versus if we don't do this. I, I would love nothing more than for someone to come along and say, "We're going to develop this, we don't need anything, congratulations, you now have a stadium, and you now have, uh, a retail development." I would have much preferred that, but we don't have that. One other thing I do want to mention, just because it hasn't been mentioned up until now, was a question of whether or not this is simply trying to paper over a bad mistake regarding the land. And again, at the danger of repeating myself, if I simply wanted us to sell the land and to just let somebody do with it as we wanted, it would not be a financially bad mistake. It would be a very, pretty good one at this point, considering the value of land. We could sell it for quite a bit more than we bought it for. In fact, that's part of the incentive packages, that we're selling it for what we bought it for, that's part of the incentives. Uh, the, but, the point is to do more with this land than simply just sell it off. It's to spark further development for the future of the city. Does ma'am?
Hi, Andrea Grimm, I have been here for a long time also, but, uh, no political involvement from me, absolutely. I, I agree with Doc, Mr. Sheehy. As a real estate broker, I felt like I should speak up as well, because I fully agree, I've seen the reports. I know that there's an issue, there's a lot of things that need to be fixed over there. And, um, there also needs to be something maybe better, or like you said, not at all. But I think that it needs to be done, a lot more research into it.
When you said that there's something worse over there, what?
Oh, I, I don't want to say it exactly, but there's several different toxic reports, and there are lots of spills, and even the property around it has septic tanks underneath it. So, as a real estate broker, I can tell you that I know that, because I've already tried to sell the land next to it, spoken to the other broker, we all know that it's there. As brokers, we all know that. So, we have to disclose that kind of stuff, and so should you.
I would just ask, uh, so we, we have had a, as I mentioned earlier, again, at, at the risk of repeating myself, we have had a envi-, a phase-one environmental study completed by an outside engineering group, uh, that didn't find anything, but if you're aware of something that's over there, I would hope that you would let us know what you know, because if it's going to make a difference in whether we do the deal or not, I, I, I would ho-, I know if I, if I hadn't- Okay, can you, can you, you have my phone number, please reach out to me, because I would like to know that information. But, I mean, rather than just, the problem, and, and I'm not saying you're doing this, but-
I just figured that everyone knew that, I mean, really.
I don't think, you're the first person I've ever heard say that, and I would imagine if anybody here who had expressed concerns about the project knew that, that would have been the first thing they said. So, I mean, please do let me know, because I, I really want to know. Okay, yeah.
Um, recommendation, um, he's saying that if we did nothing, our taxes would go higher. I would like to see that as in, in, uh, actually written down rather than off the cuff, because it doesn't make sense to me, if we're able to accumulate thirty million bucks, and we're trying to say if we don't do it, we're, we're going to have higher property taxes. But the other thing is, I do want to ask him, when was the last time you did a major project?
I'm doing one now.
Where?
In the north side of Houston with Harris County.
Okay. All right, because on your website, I don't see anything that's, uh, referencing that.
Everything on our website, a lot of projects are confidential until the city's announced.
Okay, and, and you said you sold the property, it's interesting how we had an attorney here called you, and then you guys pulled it down after he called you, I don't know if it was a mistake on your side or what. All right, thank you.
Yes, yes, please do, Chris.
Contamination thing, I don't know, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, 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 because obviously, we want to know that, if that's the case.
Yeah, the last project we did, a hundred-and-fifty acres, uh, hundred percent contamination. Uh, we removed over thirty thousand yards of dirt. Uh, it was a former Minuteman missile base in Henderson, Nevada, where they assembled the missiles and put the fuel in. Uh, complete contamination, we had to work with the city to clean it. It's now a hundred and, one-point-two-billion-dollar development, one of the best things the city of Henderson ever did. That was our risk. We're here to partner with you, we believe that that piece of property is going to be highest and best use. It's the last greenfield site in the area, there's a reason we're, we're here. Uh, and, and absolutely, we're here to, to make it an economic success for ourselves and for the community, so.
Right, thank you, Chris. Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll let Eric speak, I, we wanted to try to keep it around two hours, but we're a little over, but that's okay. Go right ahead, Eric.
So, Eric and I have been here for about two years now. So I, I did, um, I'm not a real estate developer. I do also feel like I have a good feeling about when I interact with people. The people who I've interacted with here on Jersey Village, having been a native Houstonian and lived all out throughout this city, the people on city council, mayor, and also working in the city are some of the best people I have seen and been and interacted with. All of y'all perform way above your pay grade, as far as I'm concerned. The fact that you're as transparent as you can has shown a diligence and a willingness to share and work on this project beyond my own personal scope and ability, because I know every one of y'all have your own other job, and then you put in a whole nother job amount of time and work on this project for the betterment of all of us. Another comment is, is, so the winter thing that happened this weekend, we had like three thousand people out here in the back. People was also young children, I saw four pregnant mamas. We got a whole bunch of new people coming into Jersey Village. They're going to want stuff. Founder's Day, Fourth of July, I was seeing people that were not residents of Jersey Village coming here, because like, they're like, "This place is cool, this is exciting, I, I, I want to be part of here, I want to be part of this." You know, I know some people have said that they didn't have these sort of events two years ago. They're having them now, and Parks and Rec is now developing and planning on having bigger and maintaining these level of experiences in Jersey Village. That's going to compound the interest and excitement for further development. I see you guys playing the long game. The long game, I'm here for the long haul. I back you guys a hundred percent. I know you guys are going to make the best decisions for the community. That's what I believe in. This is a community, we work all together. We may not all agree, but we're working for the long term for this city that we like to call home, Jersey Village. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric. Well, I want to thank all of you for coming out, I, I know there are quite a few of you who haven't spoken. Uh, it seems like we, I'm glad that, that a lot of people got to speak multiple times, that's usually what you want to see. But I know a lot of you haven't spoken, you may have just been here, wanted to kind of just hear what everyone had to say. Uh, but I do want to encourage you, this is, obviously, we have another town hall planned for Thursday, January 12th, same place, same time, uh, so if you'd like to come out to that, you can. Uh, but I know that everyone kind of gets their input, and they're, have their questions, like to have their questions answered in different ways, so this obviously is not the end of the dialogue, this is just the beginning. Uh, please, if you have any questions, or whether it be follow-up, or you just didn't have an opportunity, or didn't want to come up here and speak, feel free to email me, or you can call me. Uh, my phone number's out there all over the place, but if you, if you've got a piece of paper or whatever, and you don't happen to have it, it's seven-one-three, five-one-five, two-nine-five-eight. Uh, I'm, I'm happy to discuss with any questions you may have. Uh, like I said in my mayor's newsletter last month when we announced this, we're all coming into this with an open mind. If we sound like we kind of have certain facts or positions or, or- If we sound like we kind of have certain facts or positions or, or feelings on things, again, just to reemphasize, this is because this is something we've been dealing with for months now, and I realize that for a lot of people, this is brand new. Uh, when I was in that position, I sounded a lot more like Frank than I do now. Uh, it took a while for me to get comfortable with the idea, and that was only after a lot of research, going back and forth with my colleagues on council, talking to city staff, talking to other people, looking at the, the study that was done. Uh, it was not a decision or a position that came easily, uh, but at the same time also, it's not one that is static. I'm, I'm still listening for any issues that maybe we haven't considered, or any problems that we haven't really resolved. I wanna know about those things, I'm, I'm not pretending like we have all the answers up here on council. Uh, that's the most important thing, is to get, get that feedback from folks. But what I would ask is, that in return, just as we've been trying to keep an open mind about receiving that feedback, I do want people to get out there and not, don't do what I did, and have that reflexive sort of like, "Nope, not a stadium, I am, I'm not gonna have, turn this into the Astrodome with Harris County." That was actually literally my first reaction, uh, when, when we first discussed this, uh, and, and I got to this point. Uh, I would just ask you to take the time, ask the questions, do the research, and if after that you still feel the same, that's fair, I totally understand that. Uh, but, you owe it to yourselves to, to, uh, look into the issue, cause we've, we've got a little bit of more time, uh, but-
What is that topic?
I think we're probably looking at, still, a couple of months to go, right? I mean, probably six months, Chris, would you say, before we're looking at making like hard decisions, somewhere around there? So, yeah.
What's the obligation to make? Five hundred thousand?
We'll, we'll talk about it. It may be a little bit more complicated than that, but, but we'll talk about it. Or you could, you could go out there and get a petition for a charter, charter amendment. You can do a charter amendment, uh, but, uh, but either way, um, that's a bigger issue than just this one item.
What is your estimated construction time on a project like this?
What is it, about twenty-four to thirty-six months? It's, it's gonna depend on the part.
Well, it's phased, so I, I, I would expect it to be online till early twenty-five.
For, for those who may not have been able to hear, cause it was off mic, for those who are on the online, there was a question about, uh, what was the construction timeframe that we were looking at, and, uh, Chris, I think you said, no, no sooner than twenty twenty-five for the first phase?
Early.
Or, early twenty twenty-five for the first phase, so.
The letter of intent's on the website, and has a table on it with revenue projections by year.
Yeah, I would definitely, if you haven't had a chance yet, if you go to the, the city website, you go to the economic development section, I think the very last item on that dropdown menu is Town Center, uh, you click on that, there's a link right there to the letter of intent, you can, that's pretty much as much detail as we can really make public at this point, and that's kind of where we are. Uh, obviously, there'll be more details to get fleshed out, a- as we continue to have our discussions, but that's sort of, at least the, one of the reasons we wanted to have the letter of intent, I know a lot of people, the complaint with Collaborate was, we just dropped things on people, and here you go, this is what we agreed to. We wanted to bring things in in stages so that we could start to discuss details with citizens.
Have you decided what will be made for the second town hall that's slated for?
Yes.
No, no binding decisions are gonna be made for months.
Will you still be making petitions to change the charter to hold legal requests?
We'll talk about it afterwards. Uh, so, thank you, everyone, um, have a good evening.